Okay, we're on.
Okay, we're on. We're going to come to order. Today is the Wednesday, March 17, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission. Can we have a roll, please?
Commissioner Landrigan.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Yassayan.
Here.
Chairperson Kay.
Here. Report regarding posting of agenda, please.
Agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, March 10, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right. Would everyone please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any comments or corrections to the minutes of March 3?
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion support. Call roll for approval of minutes, please.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
However, our staff is also aware that the neighbors in the area are asking that it be continued to the April 21 meeting. In order to allow them to attend the meeting, the date the staff has suggested for April 7, which would be the next one after this, is also the same week as spring break. So, a lot of the neighbors will be out of town and already have a plan for that time.
Okay.
Staff is basically asking for the commission's guidance as to which date should be -- this case should be scheduled to. And also, there are a couple neighbors in the audience if the commission would like to.
Yeah, I only have one card right now on that.
I haven't heard yet, just because I heard there was going to be a continuation.
All right, well, just one second. Thank you on that. As we start to continue, and I'll take testimony from any neighbor that wants to turn in a card and wants to speak to the continuation only, what does April 7 and April 21, I presume, look for for us in terms of agenda?
You basically have an open agenda. Both of those meetings have one item scheduled, so you do have room to add additional items.
Okay, all right. So, I do have a number of speaker cards. I'll run through them. If you want to speak on the matter of whether we continue the 7th, the 21st, if you have any -- here today for that matter, if you have any opinion on it, now would be the time to speak to it, otherwise we'll consider it as a board. First speaker card, Delma Kirsch.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, if I may, just a quick note that, you know, the applicant or appellant is desiring to have the April 7 meeting.
I -- okay.
In an effort to keep the project moving, which the staff is doing anyhow, but I just wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. So, anyway, Ms. Kirsch, would you like to speak to the continuation?
Just one thing.
If you're going to start, you've got to wait till you're close to the microphone.
My name is Delma Kirsch. I live on 1656 Hasbeth Lane. I'm the immediate labor -- neighbor of the site. And I would like to have that hearing for the 21st.
For the 21st, all right.
I'm the opposition, and I will not be available on the 7th. So, it's very important for us to be present and to have our voice heard. So, I and my husband are requesting that day.
And that would be Kurt Kirsch?
Yes.
So, I have a speaker card for Mr. Kirsch. You're basically going to say the same thing?
Oh, he's not here. He just stepped out.
Oh, he just stepped out, right?
Yes.
I'm going from process of elimination, all right.
So, I realize we've been waiting for quite a long time. This case was heard by the planning zoning administrator in August of last year, and for some reason didn't get scheduled until at the beginning of March. So, you know, it's taking a long time, but for the same reason, we feel that it is important that this time that we are requesting this, our request be granted and considered.
All right, thank you very much. Speaker card for Dick Gallagher or Gallagher.
Dick Gallagher, 1641 Hasbeth Lane, in Glendale, 75 years. So, I maybe have some leverage to say I'd like to wait until the 21st. This has gone on for so long, and we've appeared for so many times here that I don't think a few more days would hurt. No, I happen to know on that week of the 7th is we're not in town at all, and it would just be a hardship. I've spoken before this, and I'm very affected by the applicant's plan, so I would appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you, sir. Speaker card for Beatrice Magallon or Magalloa.
Magallon, Beatrice Magallon. I live at 1617 Hasbeth Lane, and I would prefer to have the 21st because I will be out of town. I've got two young daughters, and they're on spring break, so we've got plans from a long time ago. The other thing that I would like to mention is the last time that we were coming before a hearing, it was told to us, there was a lot of neighbors here, and it was told to us on that very same day that it was going to be continued, so we were all here. We got no notice. We're giving notice that we'd like to move it to the 21st. So, I believe that the owner of the property is being unreasonable in waiting for us to be able to be present. So, I think a long time has passed already. No one's asked for a continuance. We just got notice of this hearing today on the 17th in March. So, it was the 3rd of March that I got the notice to come today, so that was very late. So, I don't know when the date was said, but we just got notice when we had actually been here in August. So, I would ask for your consideration and not to have the meeting on the 7th and to move it to the 21st, only because we should be given consideration and not just the applicant. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And the last speaker card you have is Mary Follett.
Yes, my name is Mary Follett. I live at 104 Darrell Drive, which is just above Hasbeth, and of course, we will be very affected by this. I must say that this started in July, then it was postponed to August. We were never informed of the cancellation or postponement. We were never informed of what the overall verdict was. I think my husband ended up having to call to find out that it had been denied. We were never informed in writing. We were not informed about this meeting until March, and then again, we arrive and find out that they're looking at a postponement for a date on the 7th, which in our case isn't going to work for us either. So, if our applicant can keep asking for postponements and be granted, I don't see why the neighbors can't be given a date that's convenient for them, which would be the 27th or afterwards, and I seriously doubt that's going to hurt the applicant's proposals or her arguments in her favor an extra week or two. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have no other speaker cards. Tim, I was just going to ask if the commission's had anything to ask staff, but go ahead, Tim.
I just want to clarify that it is not the applicant who's asking for a continuance. It's staff who's asking for a continuance here.
All right. And questions from the commissioners in regards to the continuance for staff?
That was my question, whose idea that was.
Okay. Thoughts on the commission as far as a date certain?
What is the position of staff? Why April 7th does not work for them?
Why, I'm sorry.
I mean, April 7th, why do you want to postpone to April 7th instead of April 21st?
They just, I think they just picked the next available date.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, you don't have any problem doing it to 21st?
Okay.
Your thoughts, Ms. Landrigan?
My thoughts are that we have people who have come out today, and if they're that interested and they are not able to come on the 7th, I think we should accommodate them. They're here, and they didn't know it was postponed, and I think that we should move it, if we can, to the 21st since we can accommodate them on our schedule.
Okay. Well, would somebody like to make a motion then to continue to the 21st, date certain, with no further notification required?
So moved.
We've kind of closed the public hearing at this point.
Second.
All right, we have a motion support to continue to April 21 with no further notice. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Aye.
Commissioner Yassayan.
Aye.
Chairperson Kay.
Aye, and a vote of five to zero, PCUP 2008-041, at 1650 Hasbeth Lane, is continued to April 21, 2010, without further notification. We'll move on to agenda item variance case PVAR 2009-035 at 3165 Buckingham Road.
Chair.
Can we do a couple minutes?
I'm sorry? We did do.
We did.
I thought we did.
We did.
Okay. I believe you voted no.
I was sleeping.
You're ready for Congress if you were. All right, carrying on. 3165 Buckingham Road, the applicant and appellant in property odor is Joe Kerdoglian, if I pronounced that correctly. Well, I'm sure it'll be corrected if I haven't. It is an appeal of the planning officer's denial of an application for variance to legalize retaining freestanding walls exceeding 18 inches above existing grade in front setback, exceeding three feet above finished grade within five feet of the interior setback, exceeding five feet above finished grade and more than five feet from the interior property line, and legalizing seven lampposts in the front setback area in the R1R Restricted Residential Zone, Flora Arasha District 2, described as lots 14, 15, and 31, a portion of lot 30, Block 3, tract 9328. The planning hearing officer denied the applicant's request after a public hearing conducted on November 18. The planning hearing officer denied the variance application on November 25, 2009. The property is exempt from SEQA. The planning officer would like us to sustain the denial of the variance. Staff is represented by Ms. Toledo. Is there anything you care to add or introductory remarks, please?
Just introductory remarks at this point. I'd approach the board and just briefly go over the variance issue, and then the applicant, I'm assuming, will go over their analysis and appeal, and then staff will go over their analysis.
There you go.
So, the, this is the property. It does front two streets. Buckingham Road is on this side, and this is where the front of the house faces, and we have Figaro at the rear. And the retaining wall along the east side of the property locate, this would be, this is the wall, runs across the entire east side of the property. This is the property line identified on this side. The portion of the retaining wall located on the east side of the property within five feet of the interior setback, which would be a portion in here, is located approximately four feet to five feet eight inches above finished grade. A portion of that same wall located more than five feet from the interior property line ranges from approximately five feet six inches to eight feet above finished grade. And a portion of the wall located within the 15-foot in front setback area ranges in height from two feet to two feet six inches in height above existing grade. And the front wall parallel to Buckingham Road ranges from approximately two feet five inches, excuse me, two feet to five feet in height above finished grade. And of course, the seven lampposts along that wall parallel to Buckingham Road. That concludes my introductory remarks, and if there are any questions, I am available.
Questions from staff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee, I'm sorry, Ms. Lee jumped in.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, in the report, there is a talk of new evidences or new findings that was submitted that you did not have previously. What are those?
Are you referring to the comment made by the appellant that there is additional information that the hearing officer did not have available present during the hearing?
That's correct. It says new evidence material facts not previously presented, which if considered, should change the planning hearing, you know, hearing officer's opinion. So, did you, what is it?
I'm not exactly sure what those, what that's referring to. My assumption was, and again, the appellant can address that, was that perhaps the engineer for the project engineer was not present at the hearing? That's one, I'm assuming, evidence that.
So, those facts were not submitted to you?
That is correct. And additional facts that were submitted by the appellant's representative after the hearing included a packet which you submit that was included in your packet, including revised findings, additional comments made, or in this case, a letter submitted by the project engineer as to why they needed the wall. That information and additional exhibits was not available to the hearing officer at the hearing.
Ms. Landrigan.
This is the approved plan.
These exhibits, correct, this was, this is a copy of the plans or the building plans that were originally approved for the wall.
And are these the revised drawings showing the elevations that actually were built?
That is correct, as-built plans.
Thank you.
That was my question as well. Well done, Ms. Landrigan. All right, any other questions for staff at this time? All right, seeing and hearing none. The applicant slash appellant, you have 15 minutes for your team, Ms. Yipremian. Use it as you so choose.
Thank you very much. The chair, members of the planning commission, good afternoon. Shereen Yipremian, Yipremian Consulting, and I would like to welcome Ms. Landrigan to planning commission as well as the new planning commissioner, Mr. Yassayan. I would like to go on record to say that I was not the applicant for the variance application that was filed in 2009. I was not the individual who filed the appeal, but I was retained by Mr. Kerdoglian to represent him at today's hearing. What I did is I reviewed all the materials that he submitted at the variance hearing, including his applications, staff report, and the decision of Mr. Kraus. I ended up revising the appeal application, the second page of the application. I prepared a three-page written findings in support of the project for approval. We gathered additional signatures from the neighbors, including a letter from the Chevy Chase Homeowners Association president to indicate that they do not have any concerns about this project and in particular, these walls. I have also attached some photographs for your record as to before and after situation. That's all included in your packets. Mr. Kerdoglian purchased his property in 2005 to make this house as his primary residence. Just like any new homeowner, he wanted to make some modifications to the house. He remodeled his house. His architect submitted plans to the design review board. He obtained design review board approvals in 2005 and 2006. He also realized that some of the site conditions were in good condition, such as the slope of the hillside on the site, the front portion of the property, and specifically, the driveway condition. He hired an engineer. He hired a contractor. They approached the city, presented the plans, as you see directly behind you. The plans were approved by the building department, planning zoning department, design review. They obtained approvals. They obtained a building permit, completed the project. They had a building inspector who visited the site numerous times. He even finalized the walls as-built. I do have a copy of the final inspection for your record. He did everything according to the law, to the process, as he wanted to. He never did anything illegal. It wasn't like he just wanted to build a wall, then the city caught him and cited him. It was never like that. For the last four or five years, he did everything by the law. Staff and the hearing officer, as I read their staff report, made the findings that the property owner created a self-imposed condition. This was not the case. This is not a self-imposed condition. He did everything, again, according to building code. He obtained approvals from the zoning department, planning department. His plans clearly show a six-foot-high wall from beginning of the property line all the way to the end. The code as currently is, requires or allows 18 inches. The plans clearly showed a six-foot-high wall at the beginning of the driveway all the way to the end of the wall. I also visited the site several times, and I was very impressed with the quality of the work that was out there. As a former planner and as a consultant, I thought the driveway condition, the pavers, the materials used for the walls, it complemented the house, and he can, the property owner can testify in terms of how much money he spent to make this property and this house to look the way it is. I would like to mention a couple things. Staff made the presentation. I do not agree with some of the numbers. The side wall that was constructed at the first 15 feet of the property, it's at the front setback area. According to the plans, six foot was approved, 18 inches is required by code. The front portion as-built ranges from three feet seven inches to eight feet eight inches. Again, the code required 18 inches in height. The plans were approved by staff for six feet. Within the five feet of the interior property line, there are no walls or no portion of the wall is within the first five feet of the interior setback. And I do have the plans, if you can pick this up as well.
What is that?
Those are the permitted plans?
Those are the permitted plans. If you look at my markings, the code is written in a way where within the interior 10-foot setback area, the first five feet, you can only allow to build a three-foot-high retaining wall. Then, the second portion of the five-foot setback, you are only required to build a five-foot retaining wall, not to exceed five feet.
You're using words required. You mean allowed, right?
Allowed, thank you. So, within the first five feet of the interior setback area, there is no wall or any portion of the wall that's within the first five feet. The remaining wall continues on within the second portion of the five-foot setback, where it ranges from seven foot four inches to eight foot eight inches. And again, the code requires five, and it's slightly higher than that. The remaining wall, as I have it marked, is outside of the 10-foot interior setback area, so we do not see any issue at that point. You also have walls that are in the front setback area. We do agree with the, with staff's numbers in terms of location and the height of the walls. If we look at the height of the front wall from the south side or the outside, they range from two feet eight inches to five feet two inches, including the pilaster. So, the highest point of the front wall is actually the pilaster. And if we look at the wall from the driveway side, it's one foot four inches to four foot two inches. Again, the pilaster being the highest point. And the third item that's in front of you is the number of lampposts. Seven are currently there. The code allows four. I would like to spend my time briefly to go over the written findings, and you all should have a copy of that. And the reason we're here today is to show you the burden of proof as to why these walls are both necessary, required for this type of a hillside property, and why they should be allowed. Again, in the beginning, I indicate that the strict application of the code would not allow more than 18 inches of walls to be located within the first 15 feet of the front setback area. The code would also not allow retaining walls that are more than three feet in height within the five-foot setback area or five-foot-high wall outside of the five-foot setback area. Exhibit one of the Glendale municipal code, which you should also have a copy, shows a typical square-shaped uphill lot with specific dimensions as to where and how high retaining walls would be allowed. Unfortunately, not all hillside lot sizes and shapes are what is shown in exhibit one. The subject uphill lot is 23,890 square feet with curved up slope driveway and a house that sits approximately 15, 20 feet above the street level, which runs parallel to the street, as you can see from the Google map there. The existing slope on the side requires that a retaining wall be placed at its current location to support the hillside behind it. The same reason is for the front slope area. Am I out of town, out of time?
You're pretty close. You've got about five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, they'll give you five.
Sorry. And we also argue that the, there are exceptional circumstances and conditions that.
In fact, hang on a second. Did we give them 15?
No.
You've got plenty of time. As soon as you start saying that.
I timed my presentation.
You're okay.
Okay, I can continue. To move the retaining wall away from the interior setback or to lower it further will impose dangerous conditions and therefore, an unnecessary hardship for the residents. Also, by moving the front walls away from the setback area, the driveway distance will be reduced to less than the 25-foot backup radius requirement, which if we are, we have to do that, that would trigger another variance for the backup radius. There are. There are exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property. We argue that there are definitely exceptional circumstances and conditions that apply to the property. The subject site is 23,890 square feet, has double frontage, Linda Vista and Buckingham Road. The site consists of four lots, which were combined over time and became as one parcel. Linda Vista Road frontage has the steepest topography with several mature oak trees, as you have probably seen. The house sits on Buckingham Road frontage on a flat path with slopes on the side and at the front. Driveway access to the site is from Buckingham Road. Both the house and the attached garage face Buckingham Road. The road itself is very narrow, 26-foot-wide local street. The existing house and the garage sits approximately 15, 20 feet higher than the road itself. This condition warrants the construction of walls within the front setback area, both facing Buckingham and on the side. Even though the driveway currently has a backup radius of 25 feet, most of the driveway is located within the front 15 feet of the setback area. The front wall could not be physically located outside or behind the 15-foot setback area because that will reduce the backup radius for vehicles coming out of the driveway, or coming out of the garage. The front walls provide a safety buffer for vehicles that have to maneuver in and out of the garage, and pedestrians who have to walk up and down the driveway. Given the fact that the garage and the house has been existing at this location since 1956, it is only reasonable to obtain a setback variance for the front wall rather than applying for standards variance for the driveway turnaround radius, which creates a major safety concern if reduced to less than the code-required distance. The retaining wall for the site is necessary to hold up a 20-plus-foot-high hillside area. You have a letter from the project engineer. The contractor is also present to attest to that. Even though some vegetation exists, it is not sufficient to hold up the soil. You have all witnessed the recent rains and the damages it caused at the foothill neighborhoods, Glendale, La Cremona, La Canyada. According to the civil engineer on the project, a retaining wall that high is required as a safety measure. Prior to the construction of a new retaining wall, there was a wall which not protect the driveway from any soil erosion coming down from the slope. And I have photographs to show before conditions. The front retaining wall also includes 6 lampposts to allow additional illumination to the property, and one additional lamppost is located on the other side of the driveway. Given the width of the property, the width of the property is 156 feet. This is a four-lot parcel. The code itself allows 2 lampposts if the lots are less than 60 feet of lot width. If we take the lot width of 156, it can definitely accommodate number of lampposts that currently the property owner has. We do believe that the lamppost blend in with the front retaining wall and are less than 5 feet in height. So, additional landscaping can perhaps cover the front slope of the property to reduce the height of the front wall. Number 2, that the granting of the variance not be detrimental to the public welfare. We do not believe that if you grant this variance today, it will be detrimental to the public welfare or safety. It is quite the opposite. The existing walls were constructed to prevent damage to the property and to the residents. Several letters were submitted from the immediate neighbors and the previous property owner to show support of the walls. I have written testimonies, which I included, that indicate that prior to wall construction, the driveway condition was non-conforming and was very poor, and soil debris erosion from the hillside. I would like to submit additional signatures from the neighborhood for your record. And finally, Mr. Terry, if I can complete my presentation. The intent of the, the intent of constructing retaining walls on hillside properties is to protect the house, structures, and residents from unstable hillside conditions. It is proven that the hillside is not stable, and a wall is necessary to stop the soil and debris from falling on the driveway. The fact that the hillside portion of the property slopes within the setback area, the wall has to be located adjacent to the base of the hillside. Anytime you have a hillside property, the terrain and the topography sometimes dictates where structures have to be built, and not the other way around. In this case, you can very much see that the walls are situated at a point where the slope of the property ends, or begins. And finally, the existing walls comply with the textures decorative colored masterCard block wall as required by the Design Review Board and Chapter 30, Point 30 of the zoning code. The intent of the ordinance is to prevent excessive number of lampposts for lots that are less or more than 60 feet wide. Providing 7 lampposts, we believe, for a lot that has a lot width of 156 is not excessive compared to 2 lots for lots that are less than 80 feet lot width. That concludes the findings portion of the presentation, and I do respectfully request that the Planning Commission reverse the hearing officer's decision to deny the variance application. We believe that I have successfully submitted the draft findings for your record, and thank you for your time and consideration. I have two, three other speakers who would like to make some comments.
Unfortunately, you're out of time. You've run well past the 15 minutes. We may ask questions of them, but, you know, you had 15 minutes as a group, okay?
Oh, as a group?
Yeah.
They're in a public...
No, they're interested parties. They're the contractor, they're the owner, you know? I'll give you each like a minute, okay? I mean, the rules are always, as a group, you get 15 minutes, okay? So, I'll let you each speak, but for a minute, and we may have questions for you as well. So, what order you'd like to go in?
I think I'm going to try to take off the... I'm the owner.
All right, fair enough.
Hi, my name is Joe Kurdo Lanyan. I'm the owner at 3165 Buckingham. You know, she, she pretty much summarized it, but just to let you know what's going on from my point of view. That wall was built mainly for my children's safety. You know, I bought the house in 2005. It was a mess. You couldn't go up the driveway. Cars would be sliding down because of the erosion. I spent almost, close to $40,000 to build the wall. You know, I'm a young guy. I don't want to just dump money in. I built the wall higher because it would need it to be done that way. That's an eroding mountain, and that entire mountain is falling down on my house if it's not that height. Everything I did for, and of course, I'm not a greedy selfish person. I had allowance to build this house, that 4,400 square feet. The Design Review gave me an okay, and no problem. I built 3,300. I didn't want to go bigger. I want to do what's right. I want to do what's legal. And for me, building the wall was absolutely a safety measure for people who go up and down. It's for safety for my kids. The front setback, there was just a couple of pieces of wood before. The entrance to my house, you can only walk up and down. It's very important that there's a wall here, and there's a wall here to protect these major issues, you know? When I bought the house from the earth dads, who moved the block away, were wonderful people. Everyone supports me. Her husband, her husband is an engineer in Glendale. Who knows that that's an eroding mountain, absolutely supports my wall, said that was the exact wall to build. Every engineer I showed that to, every person that's gone up there knows that that wall needs to be there to protect my home. As of right now, as we speak today, my swell is full of dirt, about 3 feet high, the entire, at least 15 feet. If you go lower, that whole thing's coming in my driveway, you know? I have support from the president of the Chevy Chase Association. I have not one person arguing against my behalf. It's because I love my neighborhood. I plan on living there for 30 years. I've been living there since, for the last 5 years. I just get compliments from all my neighbors. I have total support. And honestly, in a sense, I feel like I've been mistreated in this process because I really felt like I've done everything I could as a, as a resident of Glendale to give it my best, you know? Not only in the quality of the work, but more than anything for the safety of my children. That's all that matters to me, you know, is making sure that we can go up the driveway, come down, and the mountain doesn't fall on me. And if you, any of you have been up to the site, you will realize that those things are necessary. It's not in nobody's way, and it's, it's very important that those walls are there, you know, for the protection of my family. If there was a way to bring those walls lower, I would have done it right off the beginning. You know, I got a permit to build this wall, and I want to do it the right way. That's why the city, the inspector came in and approved my wall. I have an approval on this wall. It's already, I have a final. And for some reason, I got caught in limbo with whatever, I went through variance, I spent another $8,000, whatever. I'm fine. I love the city of Glendale. I just want to make sure that justice is, you know, served. And for me, it's for the protection of my children, and those walls have to be there.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, questions for any, any member of the applicant's team?
I have a bunch.
I'm sorry?
I have a bunch.
Okay, please.
I guess...
Who do you want to address it to? Ms. Gheprenyan?
Yeah, I guess Ms. Gheprenyan, I don't know how to pronounce her name. You know, there are a couple of questions that's lingering, and that is, obviously, the wall height were not beyond what was approved. And, you know, you said this whole building of the wall was approved by the building inspector, yet the report says, building inspector approved to the height of what was approved on the original plan, and there was reconstruction done and widening of the driveway that was done. Now, I guess my question, I guess either to you or to the staff, is that was there actually widening of the driveway beyond what was originally approved? And obviously, the height now, the end resulting height is a lot higher than what was originally intended. Now, was that just, if it was not widened, it was, you know, in the original location, then just simply to control the debris that's coming down, just added, you know, a couple feet above that, you know, that's, that's one question I had. The same question I'm going to ask you is that I asked the staff, that what is the new revelation, new facts that you're presenting that, you know, they decided on against your project that you now have that we need to consider? Because what I see here is that really, I don't find anything that is, you know, you know, eye-opening, awakening facts that, you know, that for me to consider. So, that's something that, you know, that you have the burden to tell me what that is. So, I guess I'm throwing a lot of questions at you. Was there reconstruction? Was there widening of the driveway, you know, from the original design?
Based on my understanding, Mr. Lee, and the contractors are here as well, the house had a separate building permit, separate DRB approval. The walls, including the driveway construction, had a separate permit. So, yes, the driveway had to be modified. The wall was approved for 6-foot-high, as you can see. It was stamped by staff, approved. But it seems like the front 15-foot setback area, which the code allows only 18 inches, staff approved a 6-foot-high wall. Again, the code requires, for the remaining portion of the wall, the code allows 5 feet. During construction, I believe, when the engineer and the inspector were at the site, the engineer, when he had to do an observation form...
For the city?
The engineer's coming. He, he indicated that the wall wasn't high enough to support that hillside. So, the inspector agreed to that. They eventually added 2 layers, which brought it up to 8 feet.
So...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, the inspector agreed to additional height?
Right. And he signed off. And he signed off. We do have a copy of the building permit where he finalized the wall construction.
But that additional, this is a drawing that I think you're submitting now, but that's not stamped?
That was as-built. The stamped version is right there.
Exactly. But normally, I, you know, if I was to do a construction, you know, before I do any physical work, I need to get that drawing redrawn, drawing approved by the staff, and then you build on it according to that drawing. You don't have the stamp, approval stamp on that, the final drawing.
That's the as-built.
As-built. But that's your drawing, not city's record?
No, the city's record is the one that's posted up.
Okay. So, I guess, what I'm trying to figure out is that, you know, have you actually done the work without the blessing of the, you know, the engineer's review from the city? You know, your engineer might have done all the work and all the wonderful things and made it all, I mean, I went out there, it was a beautiful wall and all that. I guess what was here before us is that, have you, you know, taken this project on your own and started modifying and widening the driveway, you know, increasing the height? What we're afraid is that, you know, if we, you know, the wall might be perfectly fine, sound, well-engineered wall, but you, you know, you're trying to do, take, take your, you know, this project, you know, on your own, and you set the presence for other people to, to follow.
I understand.
So, that's, that's what we're looking at.
Perhaps the project engineer who worked with the building inspector, as well as the contractor, they're both here. I asked them to be here because they're the ones who dealt with the city. I wasn't present at the time, so perhaps they can answer that question for you.
And then the front, front side along Buckingham Road 2, is that, you know, you do have some, you know, height of, I guess, the posts, lampposts are 5 foot.
The pilasters, right.
Now, those, you know, actually, you could lower it down, I mean, without compromising the backup radius there, but, you know, but it was built up high.
Yeah, we can, we can ask the contractor and the engineer to see if structurally it makes sense.
Because I think all this is a facade.
Right.
A portion that's sticking out.
Right. And perhaps, I mean, from the driveway side, it's much lower than from the Buckingham side because of the slope. And the property owner also suggests that additional landscaping, bushes, plants be planted because it's kind of bare at this time. So, he is proposing to do that as well.
Also, so are you proposing that, I think...
Additional landscaping for the front?
For the front?
For the front slope.
But what about the eastly wall there?
I'm sure he eventually has to do some work to the yard as well. The engineer is here, present. Would you like to, did you hear the question? Or the contractor?
My name is Vaheb Yanliyan. I'm the contractor. I was called in to finish the wall. When we got to the site, the wall was built to the 6-foot-8-inch height. I called in the grading inspector, Julio Augusta. The, right on the north side of the wall, we have almost vertical grade, right in the front portion of the setback. We agreed with the inspector to raise the wall about 18 inches to have a free board. The wall is, the wall is actually 6-foot retaining, but on top of it, you have about 18 inches of free wall so the debris does not fall on the side. And we have a swell in the back of it. As part of retaining wall, it's only 6 feet. It's not 8-foot retaining wall.
So, for clarification purposes, then, your eastly wall that you built up to, to fit higher than the original wall, actually, it is, it follows the original plan, just that you added, so the widening of the driveway actually came on the other side of the driveway there?
That's correct. The location of the wall did not...
So, you did not push it...
It didn't push the wall back to the hill.
Okay, you did not push it to the hill?
No. The wall in the front setback is almost vertical.
Okay.
And as far as the front wall where the lanterns are, where the pilasters are, from the driveway side, you only have about 6 inches. That's as a curb, or probably 8 inches.
I saw more than that, but...
On the inside?
Yeah, inside part, yeah.
As a curb, we built it so the driveway water does not end up going down the slope. These are my facts. I spoke with the building inspector at the time, Ron.
This is your picture here. You know, I see more than 8 inches there.
Well, at the lowest point is 8, and when it's level, goes higher.
Mr. Lee, let me have Ms. Landrigan interact with a question or two.
My question to you is, you're saying the wall was at the 6-feet-8-inch height. You called out the grading inspector, so it already was built.
Correct.
And you added 2 feet to that without calculations, and the structural foundation was already there. That's really kosher, isn't that?
The wall was built...
I'm sorry. Is that a kosher thing to do? Not in the city.
May I clarify? The wall was built. The block walls were in, the rebars were in, but it was not grouted. We called the city inspectors because we did not build the wall. The wall was there.
You mean the cells were not filled?
The cells were not grouted. Foundation was there, block walls were in, rebars were in.
But why would you add heights to a retaining wall when the structural foundation has to be calculated to add any height to it?
We, we got...
Without having that approved? Without having that approved by the city? That seems to me to not be, unfortunately, you're here to answer my questions. That is not the way that things are done in a city. And if you're a contractor, you should know that.
I do. We did call the grading inspectors.
But the grading inspector's not a structural engineer.
And we also did call the structural engineer. We did get his observations on that.
Where's the paperwork? I mean, simply put, where's the paperwork that says that, you know, that the grading inspector okayed the changes? Where's the paperwork that the building inspector approved the changes? Where's the notes from the structural engineer or the soils engineer that said that it was okay to add this? That's, I mean, fundamentally, we understand people told you that, but it must be in writing.
It is.
We do, we have soil engineers.
It is.
It's not in our packet that I could find. If you have it, you can submit it right now, but that's, you know, that's part of our difficulty. Here's where we're coming from, if I may. So often, in a lot of community amenities, people play games with their plans and specs. And so because we get a little bit jaded from seeing that all the time, we really like to see the proof and the process and everything. So if you have the paperwork, it's really kind of important for us to be able to see it because it renders all the suspicions that we may have as a group a little bit muted. And I'm sorry, we're, we need you at the mic. I don't have a problem if you're talking, but you need to be at the mic.
I do have from two separate engineers, you know, saying that that wall was the proper height to be built.
Yeah, yeah, but that, those are, those are just comments. It's not really an engineering activity. It is attached.
And then my soil, I can, the soil engineer at the time came and looked at it. I don't have specifically something in writing, but the soil engineer at the time, when I had to build the wall, absolutely was there because I tore the whole house down pretty much. I've left, you know, structures. I had to get soil engineer tested on my actual foundation and the mountain when I was building. That, that's a crumbling mountain. It's not, I don't want you guys to think...
That's not what we're asking you a question about. Here's, here's the scenario.
Yes.
You had an approved set of plans.
Yes, ma'am.
And you built it to them.
Yes, ma'am.
Then somebody said to you, the owner, this needs to be higher.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you call the city and say, we're going to raise this?
At that point, what I pretty much did when the contractors and the civil, I mean, the engineer came and looked at it and they said, hey, this is not enough, you know, you need to build up higher to make it. Again, I wanted to keep the wall as low as possible for cost reasons, but because they felt that it needed to be done, again, I don't know so much about contracting where I had to come back to the city and Milka knows that as well, that I don't know anything about construction. I've just been learning it as I go on. When they approved that, that it was the right thing to do. When the inspector came out from Glendale and he approved it, and I felt like we were taking every single step to get it done right. So yes, yes.
Just one thing. We don't have an engineer signing off that the new height is valid calculate, calculate, validly calculated for the foundation. There's nothing here. So there's no calculations, there's no engineer stamp of approval on it. So the alteration you made had no substantiation. The second thing is, is that the city didn't approve of it. So when you come in for a variance, the variance that you're asking for, to me, isn't for the increase there, you still have to, you'll still have to prove to the city engineer that the changes you made have not, are structurally sound. That, we're not even approving that. To me, that's a question, too, that you have to, will have to submit to.
As far as the engineering of how the wall is built and the foundation being solid, you know, my engineer's here and he, the structure and the way that thing has been built, it's, I'm totally sure it's safe, but of course, like you said, you need some sort of...
And also, it shows me that you lowered the amount of soil that's on top of your footing, because your footing comes out into your driveway. So you've lowered the top of the amount of soil that was designed for the footing, which becomes part of the structural retaining system, and now you've raised it up. I would say that, you know, the variance is not even the issue here, is whether is that structurally sound, because there's a hydrologic forces that are, have to be accounted for, and the two directions you went in seem to me to be structurally compromising the wall. Unless you have calculations that are stamped and substantiated by an engineer.
I wish I could speak on that.
Let me ask one question real quick. We'll bring up the engineer, because that's very technical for the property owner, but before that, Mr. Sheets.
It seems to me that this was done in phases. You had the house built, you had the wall built. The wall was built and you brought in another contractor. Who was the, who was the prime contractor? Who was the main contractor for all of your construction? Did you do that yourself?
No, I mean, yeah, I tried to be there. My brother was a project manager, kind of looking over, you know, bringing the difference up.
Okay, during that time, did your brother or did you at any time realize that you had done all this work with plans?
Right.
That when you were making changes, they were significant and you should prepare and submit new plans? Did that enter...
Obviously, the mistake that was made and, you know, whether I'm to blame, whether he's to blame.
No, no, I'm just trying to get a sequence of this. So did the engineers that gave you advice to make the changes, did they offer to do plans?
Obviously, that was where the problem hit, when the two bricks were added or whatever, no one went back to re, you know, do what I just did now, which is a new set, as-built. I didn't know this till, obviously, Milka came in and looked at everything and she said, oh, everything's perfect, your house is beautiful, your wall looks a little too high. And I was like, what do you mean, everything's? I didn't even know that it was not the same as what was proposed. Now, the engineer can obviously talk about that, you know?
Let me, let me, let me just ask a couple of questions. We'll have the engineer up in a second. What happened to the contractor that did the first part of the wall? How did he disappear and another individual get brought in?
Well, pretty much, the guy who, you know, it was a very expensive wall to begin with. It cost me way more than what I had intended. And he kept wanting to charge me more, and then I wasn't...
So you had a disagreement on the basis of price?
Yes, yes.
It's not like he disappeared. You know, there wasn't any issue. It's more of a financial issue?
It was more a financial issue. And then also, you know, he just wasn't consistent. It was a guy who was, you know, the house was being built perfectly. When he came in, it was like, one day he was at work, one day he wasn't. So I wasn't pleased with the work. And my brother brought in Vahe, who was a credible person around Glendale, has done a lot of city work, has, you know, knows construction, and he finished the job off. And, you know, all I could do as an owner is just come and listen to my contractor and my engineer and the construction guys, saying this is what needs to be done.
That's fine. I just, I really want to, Mr. Sheets?
One quick question. During this process, at some point, and Commissioner Landrigan alluded to it, the decision was made to excavate the driveway more than the plans called for? Is that true? Do you know when that occurred?
I don't understand.
Was the grade, the driveway grade...
The driveway used to have a hump and now it's got a...
At some point, somebody decided to go deeper on that.
I remember at the time, you know, especially up in the front of the driveway, you know, because one thing that was a big problem when I bought that house was you couldn't take your car up. You could only bring it up from one side, which is going up Buckingham and turning in. If you tried to go from the other side of Buckingham going in, you weren't making it, you were scratching the bottom of your car. That, so I'm sure that there was some sort of grade done in the front of the driveway. But really, from the garage to the street, it hasn't changed a whole lot. I actually have a picture for you guys from the garage that I took when I bought the house and the way it went down, and then when it was finished, the way it went down. It's very similar, but I believe the front, it had to have been graded a little bit because now we can have access with both cars, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Were the, the plans that we see that were submitted, we've got a retaining wall permit. Was the front retaining wall work part of that, part of the wall that we're spending a lot of time talking about?
I, I, I believe...
Was that a separate permit?
I believe it was just separate, and I don't believe it needed a permit.
It says there was no permit on that.
There was no permit.
Not on the front wall.
Not on the front, because, so there wasn't, there wasn't anything permitted for the front wall. How far, is that within the setback? I'm sorry?
Both walls are permitted.
Okay. Then, okay, so the front wall is permitted as well?
That's not what we're seeing here.
No, but both, the front is a whole separate. I don't believe there was a permit for it.
Well, my question on it is, I'm curious about the front wall, and I'm curious whether the light posts and the counts for the light posts were shown on the submitted permitted drawings, or if this, again, was something that was added. And part of our concern is twofold, frankly, for me, is, is we want, from the one side, I want to make sure that the citizens are doing what they're supposed to. People make mistakes, but then people are trying to do what they're supposed to, especially the licensed contractors and engineers. Secondly, I want to make sure that the building department in the city is actually paying attention to what's going on, too. Because if you got a plan that was permitted at six feet and all of a sudden they're signing off something that's eight feet, somebody at the city's not doing their job. And so that's, I think, why we're locking up on this a little bit.
I agree. And going back to the way, the integrity of the house and the way it was built, myself and as a resident, I did not try to shortchange or skip any process here. I tried to build this correctly and as informatively as I possibly could. And going back to the lights, I'm not too crazy about whether it's five lights, six lights, seven. My concern was, there's no lighting on Buckingham. There's not one lamppost. The resident, just if you guys know, the first greenhouse that was built in LA County was on our street, the beginning of Buckingham, he had to go purchase a streetlight himself. I mean, there's just no lights up there. It's, you can't even walk your kids. You can't walk your dog. The light is to help people. And I have a, pretty much the longest driveway on that whole street. No one has my driveway. Everyone has it right to their garage. I actually have a driveway that goes up, so...
All right.
I'm not too concerned with the light, whether it's five or six or seven, but really, that street is probably the darkest, one of the darkest streets in Glendale.
Well, again, my only comment is, what did the permitted drawing show? Ms. Landrigan, you have another question?
Yes. Let's continue with the front wall because on the approved plans, it doesn't appear that there is a wall on the front. And from the drawings that you have stamped here, there is no wall and there are no pilesters. So it appears to me that in the original, a permit, that was not approved. There is no...
There's a cut for sheet C3, but we don't have sheet C3. And it may indicate a wall, but we just don't have that sheet.
I believe a wall was indicated, but again, I don't know 100% sure. It's been almost two years I've built those.
Been a while.
Three years ago, yes.
But we don't, it doesn't have the same symbol that a wall would typically have, so that's, it could be a curb. You know, typically, it has to be a certain height before you show it. So, and it also doesn't look to me, and I would be interested if you do have it, if it is a retaining wall, because just from looking at it, it doesn't appear to be a retaining wall. It appears to be the front wall.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's, we built that basically, not like the eastern wall that's built, it doesn't have rebars and concrete in it. Well, it does have concrete, but it doesn't have rebar, correct?
Oh, I'm sure it's got bar in it.
It shows here that they...
Sorry, that's, that's me talking.
Yeah, there's bars in it.
Okay. The front, again, the height?
Not retaining at all.
The height for the front, for me, again, I don't know anything about construction. For me, was just common sense, like, well, my child is standing right there, it's a foot up from the inside, not from the outside, from the inside, there's parts of that drive, that wall that's only about a foot, foot and a half. And that's where we...
When did you decide to put the wall in?
Everything happened at the same time, almost. You know, after, they all happened simultaneously, pretty much. The driveway, the two walls, I, we did almost all that work around the same time.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify one thing, the inspector came out and approved the eight-foot wall, right? The inspector came out and approved what you have right now? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Actually, that's a good question. Was the side, was the driveway in when he approved it?
Was the driveway in at the time he approved the wall? I believe so.
Was the driveway done?
The grading was done.
That was the question.
Yeah, okay.
We got, we have a grading final with us.
So the inspector was incorrect, is that based on?
Based, yeah, essentially, the inspector was...
Do you have C3 there?
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the board or commission quickly, the front wall was part of the design review board approval. It showed that it was there as part of the design review board approved set of plans. So perhaps that was all under that permit rather than, and also, if we can check with staff on the wall, if it's less than five feet, I don't believe a permit is required.
No, typically, it wouldn't, typically, you wouldn't require a permit unless it's, you got a problem if it's in the setback anyway, though.
For location, right. It's a zoning code issue, but in terms of permit, if it's less than five feet, I don't believe it requires a building permit, but it was clearly shown on the design review board approved set of plans.
Mr. Lee, you had a question?
Yes, I did. Page four of your report, second paragraph from the, you know, from the bottom, the case planner, you did talk to the inspector operating on this wall, and his reply was that the inspector informed the case planner that he approved the easterly retaining wall because it was constructed in compliance with the approved building plans prior to the reconstruction and regrading of the driveway.
That is correct. As a matter of fact, I spoke to both the inspector in this room. I remember very clearly, it was about a week ago, the inspector, Ron Billings, and Stuart Tom, the building official, were present, and I asked, I presented this question because I mentioned that we'd be having a hearing. He said he'd be available, just to call him if he needs to come to the hearing room and testify. In any case, that's what he advised me, that the wall, excuse me, the, the wall was constructed the way it had originally been proposed on plan, the way it was approved, and that's why he finalized it. He issued a final approval. The driveway at the time he approved the wall was not widened or any excavation had taken place.
Okay, that, yeah.
Is it possible to bring in this inspector? I mean, so far, clarification?
Probably a little late to find him today.
Yeah, the inspector, Lee...
But yes, we could.
Step five, we'd have to see if Stuart Tom is available.
Here's, here's what doesn't add up, okay? And frankly, I don't believe the building inspector in terms of the retaining wall being built to the plan, because it was, it was never built to the plan. It was always built taller, regardless of this grading that happened out by the street. So the, as far as I'm concerned, I'd really like to question the building inspector because I don't think what he told you is accurate.
I need some more clarity here.
Mr. Garcia, were you referring to say something?
I was gonna, I will defer to Mr. Sanders, but I do want to make a comment before.
Oh, all right.
Okay. So the inspector approved that wall, and then what happened after that where it had to come to the variance? Who went and said, okay, no, this actually needs a variance?
That was me. What occurred was, I went out to do a final inspection for the house for design review.
Okay.
And that occurred on, on or before September 13th of 2007, because the inspection list that I prepared is dated the 13th of September of '07. And my comments were that the house is fine. I didn't have any issues with the house. The main comments related to the wall. I stated to reduce the retaining wall to a maximum of five feet above, excuse me, five feet high along the north side, which would be the left side of the property. I mentioned the front wall along the, front wall along driveway to be reduced to a maximum of 18 inches above ground and driveway level, and that was referring to the front one parallel to Buckingham Road. And three, to submit approved plans slash details for all proposed light fixtures in the front yard. Because staff did not approve and did not see, at any time was it presented to staff, that front wall parallel to Buckingham Road with light fixtures. I did approve the plans before you that show the easterly, yes, this easterly retaining wall to a maximum, I handwrote some, I made some notations to a maximum of six feet high because it was five plus freeboard, five feet plus freeboard, but six feet. Notwithstanding, it appeared much higher when I went out there, and that's why I questioned it, and I asked verbally to please submit as-built drawings. Time went by, and eventually they came in, I don't know the exact date, but for the variance approval because they were not able to lower the wall.
Is that extra, is that extra height on the wall, the shaded part? Seems like on the picture, it seems a little, the bricks look a little different.
I'm not sure which shade or what exactly.
They seem like they're new, newly, they seem newer at least.
What?
The bricks on the top, yeah.
You're just getting efflorescence and moisture.
Moisture looks like.
Okay.
Yeah, because I wondered that, when I saw the pictures.
And also, for the record, the, the design review board elevation drawing does not include a front wall parallel to Buckingham. So I don't, I'm unclear as to when or at what point, when the appellant or the owner states that it was approved by the design review board, that does not appear to be part of, or at that time was part of the scope of work.
Mr. Garcia, would you like to interject now?
Sure. As I'm listening to the discussion, I just wanted to remind the commission that ultimately the sign, the, excuse me, I've been working with signs for the last month, I was gonna say the sign. The walls, they don't comply with the code, and it's really for the commission to decide whether or not there are exceptional circumstances to prove the wall and whether there's a unique hardship justifying the variance. I think obviously, to the extent the wall or the additions to the wall are made without the proper approvals, that might go to whether any hardship is self-imposed. But I think, I just wanted the commission hopefully to refocus on the fact that you're here to decide whether or not there are exceptional circumstances and hardships justifying the variance. That's really the critical factor in deciding this case.
Okay. I know we want to speak to the engineer, and I appreciate you helping to keep us focused on these things, Mr. Garcia. Does someone happen to have sheet C3?
Can I get a technical here?
You can, but.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, do you happen to know, do we have sheet C-3?
No, but I don't have anything with me.
Oh, I just saw some plans, I wasn't sure.
Those are, those are the architectural points.
Okay, so you're the.
My name is Artok Kazarian, I'm the, I'm a civil engineer, licensed civil engineer. I'm the engineer of record for this project, both the house and the walls. I'm ready to answer any questions. I can clarify some of the questions we have already asked. If I may just go back to those questions, then we can ask, answer more questions if you have. To answer Ms. Landergren's question about, the retaining wall is designed and built according to the plan, and it's safe and sound. The, it is designed, the height or foundation, whatever is related to that design is according to, is built the way it is designed. We, I have done structural observations that I remember, but of course, I don't have the paperwork with me. Maybe the inspection department have the copy of those, you can, we can get them from them. Both the front and the front wall along the retaining, Buckingham, and the side yard, they are all permitted according to the plan that I have. It's shown on the plan, and they are permitted. And the driveway slope you were mentioning about, the original driveway slope wasn't complying as the owner, Joe, said that it was, would be, you couldn't drive over with a low car. So we had to correct the driveway slope, and on the origin, on the original permitted set of plan, it was corrected. And if I'm not mistaken, the driveway was built in accordance to the permitted set. They didn't lower the, lower it during the construction or after the wall was built. The wall foundations were built in accordance to the driveway slope, so it wasn't exposed. I think you mentioned, you asked about the dirt being removed. No, it wasn't. The foundation was built according to the driveway slope to accommodate the excavation or correction of the driveway slope later. So the driveway slope is built in accordance with the original plan. The, the height of the wall was raised because of the sloughing of the hill behind it. So we need to have a higher freeboard to protect the driveway and the, basically the resonance and the building. That was the reason it was raised up.
All right, so, so it's your testimony that the size of the footing, the thickness of the wall, the rebar that's in the wall, all of that, you can add two feet to that structurally, and it was okay? That the added two feet in wall, approximately two feet in wall height, given the additional soil that it's retained, that the thicknesses of the block, the rebar within the wall, the strength of the block, the strength of the grout, the size of the footing and so on, was sufficient as originally designed that it didn't need any changes because of the added height?
You mean the detail, the construction detail changes? It was done accordingly, but what I'm saying is, the detail was done and they built it according to that. Now, I understand it wasn't part of the permits, it wasn't, it wasn't part of that original permit, but I have to go back to then see it.
Let me just restate it. You designed and were very comfortable with the retaining wall with a particular size footing, particular block, particular rebar schedule, and all that kind of stuff. And it's your testimony that with all that stuff in place, it was okay to add an extra two, two or three courses of block, and nothing else structurally needed to be enhanced in that wall? The footing was fine, it could, the footing as designed was able to take the additional wall height, the wall as designed was able to take the additional imposed load from the bank. That's what you're telling us, yes?
And it simply said yes.
That would be a good way to say it, simply.
Simply said yes, it is.
And you have calculations?
Of course. They wouldn't have done it without that. I would have let them.
But do you have these stamped drawings that we have on record for this? That's, that's really what we're asking. There are no stamped approved drawings that you have. Even the as-built drawings don't have your stamp on it, so you have not assumed liability.
Which I just, I was looking at it, I said, how come I didn't stamp it? No, I can even stamp it.
I was thinking that too.
I can run to my car and bring a stamp it for you here, but.
All right, let's, we still have, I think there's still valid questions for the engineer, but just writing again on Mr. Garcia's comments, we're now so much worried about the structure of the wall, we're just kind of wondering why it was required. Related to that, you designed a wall that was going to be six feet high. So when you designed that wall, you were well aware of the slopes of the wall that you were building against, right?
Yes.
You had a survey. How could you be so wrong? How did the wall have to increase in height from what you had designed?
There was a decision made on the construction to, at the time of construction, to raise the wall for, as I said, for sloughing or the, for this freeboard.
Freeboard, right. But yeah, but freeboard should have been part of your design as a structural engineer. You're always going to anticipate freeboard.
The survey not usually, it's exactly what it is on the plan and what it is on the site.
You mean the survey was just done by an amateur or wasn't a registered surveyor?
I can't, I can't testify about that part. But you, the place that they built the wall required us to go higher than, height of the wall was designed, which was six feet.
Yeah, see, I fully believe that no owner in his right mind wants to put an extra couple feet on his wall because he's paying for it. But by the same token, something happened with design or installation that isn't to what the original plan showed. And it was either a follow-up in the design or something got done on site that wasn't right.
Yeah, it's, I don't know what happened to the site. As I said, maybe the contours that is given on the plan that I worked with is different than what it is at the, at the site. That's could be very possible.
Did your, so you designed the front retaining, or the front planner wall slash retaining wall as well, right? Did it have light posts as part of the design?
To be honest with you, I don't remember what the original design was.
Okay, all right. Other questions for the engineer?
Just a quick one along the same line. Did something change along this question of designing the wall and surveying the wall? Did some, is there something that you're aware of that changed relative to that hillside from the planning stage and the surveying stage? And then to the building stage that would make you want to decide that additional, the wall had to be added to? I mean, did something significantly, significant happen? The wall broke away or there was, did something change that you're aware?
Not that I am aware of, but.
But for some reason you had to change.
There's an original driveway, which is, I don't remember, it's probably asphalt. There was a short retaining wall next to it on that side. And based, because of the widening of driveway, because we had to accommodate that driveway approach, we had to widen the driveway approach, the driveway to have a better slope to go into the main driveway. So we had to push the wall back a little bit. And so things has changed. I can only say that driveway was removed, asphalt driveway is removed, plus that original wall is removed. After that excavation and removal of those walls, construction site, it changes. Basically, that's, I can say that part that it's changed that much.
Okay, thanks. I have one question. You know, obviously, in construction, during construction, you know, the changes come about because of the site conditions, you know, and sometimes your calculation might not, you know, reflect exactly, you know, what it is on the, on the construction site. And in this case, you know, you're saying that that's what happened. And, yeah, when I was out at, out at the site, I did notice that, you know, you said you added two feet to allow for the freeboard, but you know, actually, the hillside was pushing right against that, two feet you added on to that thing. So obviously, that was needed, that height was needed to retain that hillside. I guess that's the whole thing that we're, we're coming back to is that, then why the original application, the permitting process approved for six foot, and then you found this condition at the site as you're building the wall that required for you to go two feet higher, that you did not bother to come back and engage city officials in the process as an engineer?
The detail has been, I haven't given approved detail, not, I'm not saying approved, approved by me, by, with my stamp that they continued the construction. The process, if they came back to the city or they got it, I don't know. I don't remember that. I don't know, because I wasn't involved in that process to get the, I did the calculation for my own, for my own, and getting the details, that's my part with my stamp. I approved it. I gave it to the owner, then what happened next, I don't know. It's not my, my, it wasn't my responsibility to run to the city to get approval.
Okay.
And so you have a record of that stamped change?
I really have to go to the archives and find it. This is about two years, two or three years ago.
Any other questions for the engineer at this time? Any questions for the appellant in terms of their initial presentation?
Thank you.
All right. Staff, you'll have a rebuttal period here shortly, Mr. Premium. Staff, further comments, clarifications?
I think a lot of the information that was, has been stated here today basically is in the report as well, so I'm not going to reiterate what's already been stated. If you'd like, I could go over the findings in the recommendation section of the report. If not, I don't have anything at this point further to add.
Well, your findings, of course, were in the negative, so, you know, we're really listening to the appellant suggest how we should overcome your findings.
Well, one thing I would actually like to add is there, we understand that a retaining wall is necessary, obviously, to mitigate future hillside instability, particularly along the easterly property, property line or easterly side of the property. So that is, that is correct, and that's why the attempt was made to correct that or mitigate that situation, and staff did approve some plans. The ones pinned behind you are the ones that I recall, and I remember stamping. If there's anything to be added to that, I'd like to see it and have it presented before me. I just, my recollection at this point, it's been a few years, I don't remember, but this is what I do remember stamping, what you have before you today. Obviously, there's been discussion as to when it took place. Again, staff was not involved as to when it takes place. We don't do benchmark type inspections. The building inspector is the one that goes out there and, and takes care of the building issues. Staff strictly went out there when it was the framing inspection for the house and the final inspection, design review inspection for the house. And that's when the wall was obviously noted.
And your final design review inspection is triggered by the final building inspection?
C of O, third question.
Yes, what occurs is that the building inspector will not sign off on the, in this case, the building permit until the design review portion is signed off, and I denied it. So obviously, they never, they have not at this point received a final approval on their inspection card.
So the final we've got in here was just on the retaining wall only?
That is correct. And lastly, I want to mention that there are, there are other design options that would not result in any for variance request. We have explored those with the property owners. As a matter of fact, the hearing officer and myself met with the owner, and we explored different options, which some of them obviously are mentioned in your report. For example, the visible height of the retaining wall along the easterly side of the property could be reduced by constructing an additional wall in front of the existing and then having that five-foot required separation by code between the two walls, and you obviously would infill it with earth. That's an option in order to address that zoning issue.
Which would cut down on the driveway width or force the driveway to be reconstructed?
That is correct.
Okay.
A second option is a sloped landscape area in front of the existing retaining wall, thereby minimizing the exposed.
The old, the old slope, the backfill to hide the fact the wall is high.
Correct. And as far as the wall fronting Buckingham, or in this case, parallel to Buckingham Road, an option would be to plant large shrubs or a hedge, similar to the hedge that currently exists along the, I believe it's more of the, on the westerly side of the front property. You have that existing wall, and then to the right of that, as you're facing the property, there is hedge planted there. And that creates some sort of barrier if there's a concern regarding the safety, because we've heard a lot about safety concerns, and there's no doubt, there is obviously an issue there. However, there are other ways or other ways to mitigate that, and that's, could have been something that could have been explored prior to constructing the wall the way it's as built. And lastly, regarding the, the lamps, again, true, lighting in the area on that particular street is an issue. I don't doubt that. I have driven the, the street in the day and in the evening hours, just to kind of get a sense for what it's like in the evening as it relates to lighting. There's only, that I noted, one street lamp, and that is actually north of the property. It's quite a bit of ways because you have to, it's located on the corner of, and I can't read the, I don't know exactly the name of the street, but there's a small street as you continue going north on Buckingham or east on Buckingham. I only noted one street lamp on that street block. So lighting is an issue. However, again, you, you have flexibility on your lot. The maximum allowed is four. Another option would be landscaped lighting. You can have those built in to a wall, a wall again that conforms with the code, that would be an option. Or you have landscaped areas, you can propose again, the lighting or in the, in the landscaped areas. And, or you can propose additional lighting beyond the 15-foot setback. So you have the four next to the driveway, or however you decide to, to spread them out, and then you have additional lighting if you need it, but again, outside the 15-foot setback. So the, the options and the alternatives are there, and they exist, whether it's a cost issue or whether it's trying to, or you just can't do it at this point. Obviously, it's difficult to make, to make findings in support of it. And that's why the variance was, was denied in this case because the hearing officer could not make the four findings because there are other ways to ameliorate the situation.
I have a question.
Please.
One of the options you talked about, you know, creating a five-foot space and building on the wall to fill in the earth so that, you know, you minimize the exposed, you know, the retaining wall. If, let's say they choose to do that, then that, by doing that, that gets them out of this, the variance requirement, is that correct? Or do we still, still need to as a board handle this as a variance with condition that, you know, if they, you know, decide to do, you know, take that as an option? You know, by, by acting on that, by building that voluntarily, you know, then that's obviously this problem, I'm asking.
Yeah, we have three issues, so that would remedy, again, once we see it on plan, to make sure it's built according, done according to, to the zoning code. That's one way achieving conformance with the code. But again, we, we still have the two additional issues that need to be resolved regarding the front wall and then the lamp posts.
No, no, no. You'll have, in a minute, you'll have rebuttal time.
Obviously, the driveway was, was wide enough, or, you know, you do have, I guess, you know, ability to do that. Now, is a five- Uh, now, is a five-foot magic number or?
It's a requirement, yeah, well, it is a requirement by code.
Five feet for another retaining wall?
I mean, again, those were just options, but we haven't, I mean, not being the one who actually designed it, it's, and not seeing it on paper, to what degree it impacts other items on the, or creates other problems on the property in terms of, uh, non-compliance with the zoning code, I don't know. So, I mean, again, you could propose it on paper and then again, or on plan, and then we'll review it in order to make a more educated decision as to whether or not that would be suffice to remedy the situation.
Ms. Landerga?
The five-foot setback is for retaining walls. This is not really a retaining wall.
Are you referring to the front?
In the front.
Yeah, a portion of that wall very, and I don't, I'd have to go up to the board to see which portion of is retaining, but it's a minor portion.
Yeah, it's a minor portion.
Uh, the rest of it is freestanding.
And in?
The remainder of the wall is freestanding.
That's the money was a permitted wall because of that?
In the, it, when it's outside, so you can have a freestanding wall within the front yard set?
Eighteen inches max is the allowed?
Right.
With the setback.
Okay.
Plant or wall, so.
So Mr. Chair, what we are deciding is what's actually out there, what's being proposed here, and strictly on that, what we're deciding on, fine?
So what out there is, makes it?
Let's all speak up, because we're starting to mutter here a little bit.
Sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Well, between the low voice and, and, you know, being on the other side of the room, could you restate that, what you had said, Mr. Sheets?
Either his, Garcia pointed out, is to, options out there, Amika.
Or if they justify the variance to?
Just, right, right.
If the findings can be made.
So any of these, you know, recommendations, then they'll have to come back later day to you to get an approval?
Well, yeah, we still need to approve it and look at it and review it.
Well, let's talk about the process a little bit, in, in terms of, of, they've, they've requested a variance, okay? When they came into the request of the variance, and you were not the hearing officer, right?
No, Wolfgang Kraus was the hearing officer.
Oh, Wolfgang, yes. All right. Before it got to the point of an actual variance, there must have been some conversations with staff, and was that primarily with you or with someone else, or you don't know? No, it wasn't with me.
That would have been with me.
Okay, so, okay, so, boy, you're working well as a team here. Okay.
Thank you.
So they came in, you said, "I've got a problem with what you've got." And then was there a conversation about solutions without having to ask for a variance? I mean, you clearly said, "Well, you're going to need a variance." And then did somebody say, "Well, but there are some solutions here for you where you don't have to go to a variance?"
I don't believe, if I recall, that I went to that extent as to advising them of, what if you build a second wall? The most I said, which was noted in my, um, record of my inspection list and the design review, was to lower it to a maximum of 18 inches. Um, do you, if, if you feel, um, that you can make the four findings, I can't keep you from applying. However, I, I don't know if, if you have any, I personally don't know what your hardship is. At least, perhaps you can make one of the four findings, and we discussed that. For example, it's not detrimental to the public welfare, for example. It's not, it's, it's trying to remedy a, a safety issue. But, no, I, I don't believe I discussed into, to that much detail as to what other options to explore besides lowering the wall to comply with current code.
Okay, um, all right, because that, I would like to think, and it depends, every situation's different, but I would like to think that rather than forcing people to go through, you know, the month, several month-long variance process and the money associated with it, that, and again, it's 2020 hindsight now that we're here, but that staff, whether, you know, not just necessarily you, but anyone on staff would say, "Okay, here's what your problem is." And then say, "Your problem is your wall's too tall, and one of the ways you can solve it is by doing something at the base of it, as opposed to tearing it down or looking at slopes behind the wall and seeing, at least running that out so that the, you know, the potential applicant or the person that may have to seek variance has a chance to think through what they might be able to do without having to go to the variance process."
The one item I did mention was, for example, on that easterly wall that I mentioned, excavate from behind the wall, again, to, to lower that existing, but he said that that would be costly. So a lot of what was mentioned had to do with, again, that the finance, the finances in order to, to remedy the existing.
Well, the problem with excavating is at some point you have a slope, and at some point you hit the neighbor's property. So there are, you know, this is where a specific property, that's one of the paths where we can find a variance, is, hey, I've only got so many feet and I hit my neighbor's property, I can't go one-to-one or whatever it happens to be. So, yes, that's a suggestion you can make, but that's also one that's pretty easy to say, "Here's my problems with being able to do it. Here's my practical difficulty with doing that solution."
Well, again, that's what the owner would basically, a rebuttal was, "No, I can't do this because of this reason," or "I can't lower, let's say, I can't shave the front of the wall running parallel to Buckingham Road, because, again, then there is an existing slope and it'll cause more future instability." So, again, perhaps some of the options or some ideas I gave at first, again, were not good enough, but again, I, I know that I did not explore installing or proposing or constructing a second wall. That actually took place after the hearing.
Okay. Other questions right now for staff? All right, seeing none, let's go with the rebuttal period, Ms. Upremian, and you had a thought, hopefully you remembered it.
We'll follow. You know? My comment? Wanna, go ahead.
And you have 15 minutes, however you want to spend it.
Mr. Kim, thank you for bringing that up about the variance. Besides my house, and forget the subject for a sec, it would be great if the people in City Glendale, like, you know, the inspectors and everyone, they would sit down with you and say, "Hey, you know what? You built this wall. You could have built it this, I mean, there's a solution to it. Let's do it this way." I went through variance and spent $4,000, and I had to have a meeting with Milka and Mr. Kraus, and the only solution that really, you know, that they said, mentioned was this wall, but this wall is, sounds to me absolutely ridiculous. It would make the whole neighborhood look massive and bulky. It would have, I would have no space to park. I would have to spend a, it's not a little wall, I would have probably spent another $30,000, $40,000. It's, it's like ridiculous, uh, solutions. There's no, I'm not worried about the lights. I, okay, I'm not worried about the front. That, this stuff, the wall is what's protecting my home and is what's protecting my children. There's no solution in building another wall that goes in front of already a big, massive wall, another wall, we're sorry, and taking away parking space, making the, uh, neighborhood look more massive and, and ugly. Uh, it's just not a solution for me. That's not, that's not, uh, something that's reasonable. But thank you for mentioning that to them as far as, you know, before someone goes into variance, I don't know anything about findings. When she asked me, "Well, you got four findings, you guys need to go find it." I, Kim, I did the variance by myself. No one was here, just me alone. And honestly, tell you the thing, I think Mr. Kraus just looked at me, just, "Mm-hmm," and then they went out and made a decision. That's what I feel. That's the only reason I'm saying, uh, I felt like I got a little bit mistreated in this situation. Nothing against them, they're fine people, I have no, nothing personal against them. But, um, I just feel like, you know, if there was a solution, what is it? Let's solve it, just like the president of the Chevy Chase Association mentioned in the letter, you know? Let's, let's find something right. You know, I don't want to build a wall in front of another wall to take away two parking spots, make my driveway smaller. I worked really hard to build that house and put a lot of money into it. Why would I build another wall when the wall there is already perfect? It's, it's, it's not bothering no one? It's protecting me? Fine. If you tell me that one extra light, I'm not going to argue with you, because you're probably right, or you're, whatever, or the front setback. If it's a few inches lower high, we'll work on it, we'll take a wall off, we'll put one down. I'm willing to work, but the, my main concern is the side wall. That's something that I spent over $40,000 in, there's a swell, it protects from landslides, there's water going out from both sides to Linda Vista and Buckingham. I can't just simply tear down that wall. That would be, uh, a bit beyond, and honestly, if I did tear it down and made it lower, you know what would happen? That whole mountain would fall on my driveway. Then we'd have a major lawsuit. That's, I mean, that's where, that's leading to, you know? So, so when she mentioned, you know, Milka mentions, like, there's solution, there's one, one solution, what, building a wall? I think we're better off where we're at instead of that, you know? But as far as the other stuff about the front and the lights, I do agree with. You know, whatever needs to be done, we'll do it. If we need to take a one breakout from the front, make it a little lower, fine, but, uh, again, the front was done for a really simple reason too. You're going up that driveway, it's, it's, the inside, it's not that high, it's not that tall. We, I pull my car out from the garage, I get very close to that, uh, wall every time when I do a U-turn and go out. If I'm, and my wife is going in and she's backing out, that wall is what's protecting us. And there was an existing wall there before. There was a fence, there was a white fence, as you can see in the picture. It was like a ranch style with two woods, and it was high. It was about four feet. But because it was just two wooden fences going around, it didn't seem like?
It was hidden behind the landscaping, is what it was.
Yeah, and the ivy, yeah, there was, it was wild ivy. And I do plan on doing something with the front. I've just spent so much money with the city. I, I, I mean, I can't, uh, even landscape the front. I want to, I want to make my, uh, neighborhood look beautiful. I love living there, and all my neighbors love me, and everything about it is, is fine. If, really, if it wasn't, I wouldn't let this, my integrity and the way I built the home, and if you, you know, you've, and Mr. Lee has seen it, I'm sure he can testify to that, I would not have it done if it was unnecessary. So, I, I am sorry, in the process, something happened that wasn't proper, that's why I went through variance, and that's why I'm here today to say, "Hey, there was a mistake made, whether it was me, my engineer, the city, the inspector, doesn't matter to me now. What matters to me now is, is what's built correct on my side with my topography." And everyone who's an engineer, everyone who's seen it, has said yes, and I feel like it is. Uh, and, and that's it, the solutions are way too ridiculous, you know? Uh, you know, excavate, put walls up like it's nothing. I have a long driveway, I can't just put a wall up, I can't just excavate. And yes, there is also a financial situation. Those walls are $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 to build. They're not, uh, little walls. I think I've done justice for the neighborhood by building that wall, because before, as you can see in the pictures, that whole, the whole driveway was, I could only imagine after these fires and rains what would have happened if there wasn't a wall. So, you know, like I said, I'm more flexible in the front and the lights. I have no problem with whatever you have inside, honestly, or whatever you want, I just want to get, finish up. I've worked hard to be in this situation. I've spent hundreds of thousands already on this thing. I cannot afford to do more. I want to come to a solution and fix it. But the eastern side of the wall, that is built correctly and is protecting my family, I would, I would, that has to be there. I, I wouldn't want to lower it. I would be scared to lower that thing. And that's it, whatever you decide with the front, I'm, I'm very open to, but that side, it's something that I just don't see happening. Even my, I'm not a professional, but even the common person can tell that, hey, there's a 15, at least 20-foot area right now that's full of concrete and dirt. If I lower that wall, that whole thing is falling on me. I got, every two weeks, I clean the swell, because it's a crumbling, rotting mountainside. On the backside, where my backyard is, that mountain is very stable. On the left side, it's a crumbling brick. If you touch it with your finger, the whole thing's falling down, and that's why I have planted, uh, uh, some landscape there to try to hold it. But whatever you do, when those rains come, man, it's, it's coming down.
I just would encourage you to let your, let Ms. Upremian keep working towards the findings?
Yes.
Since you have a relatively brief period of time.
Thank you.
And we may have some follow-up questions for you, Kim.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, again, Shaw, Kye, Premian. You have heard the testimonies from the project team. I had submitted the four required findings. The walls are there according to the plans, submitted, approved by the city, approved by the building inspector. Yes, they're a little bit taller, but what's the benefit of, uh, changing the walls in terms of structural? Um, the wall, again, that's presented, we are talking about a small portion of the wall that's within the interior setback area, not the entire wall. Some of the wall is completely outside of the 10-foot interior setback area. The front portion of the side wall, which is within the 15-foot setback area, the strict application of the code in terms of 18 inches would not be sufficient. As you enter the driveway into the property, an 18-inch would not be a sufficient height to support that hillside. In terms of the wall at the front, we have argued that if you move the wall outside of the 15-foot setback area, then you're within the 25-foot backup radius for the driveway distance. So in any option, any way you can think of, there is practical difficulties. The unique nature of the property, again, this is a hillside property, terrain and topography dictates where structures and buildings should be built. If you move the building, again, you have the slope and the hillside condition, which may not survive. Again, we have proven that, that the walls meet the intent of the ordinance. It's not a detriment to the public. You have neighbors who have supported this project. You have a letter from the homeowners association. You don't see anyone here from the neighbors objecting to the wall. The walls are built in terms of colors, materials, as according to the design review section of the code 30.30. So we do suggest that you take a look at this case and hopefully you support the project as built at this time. Again, with the number of lighting or lamppost, the property owner is flexible, although I argued because of the lot width, the number of lampposts is not overwhelming for that particular street. Again, the neighbors had no complaints about the lighting on that block. And with that, we hope that you make the right decision and you, um, have the property owner enjoy his property. He spent several thousands building and remodeling his house and the walls. Again, he did everything according to the plans. The building inspector, uh, obtained copies of the structural observation report, which is a state requirement, I believe. The, the structural engineer indicated that he submitted those for the city records. I'm sure they have a copy there. So we just need you to make the right decision and support the variance application.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last sentence? You said you submitted what to the staff?
Uh, in terms of the building permit process, I believe the city requires a structural observation report. That's the title of the report from the civil engineer or structural engineer before he finals the plans, right? Before he, the inspection, finals the inspection.
And you address this eight-foot, the top foot increase?
The structural, right, the structural, um, nature of the wall has to be verified by the structural engineer for the project, and that report needs to be submitted to the city. That's a common process.
But to, to lead on what you're asking, he doesn't specifically say, "Oh, and I've looked at the added two feet in the wall." He's basically saying?
That's what I was getting to.
"I've inspected the wall and it meets my design."
Okay.
You know, something along those lines.
The design and the structural, uh, nature of the wall.
But he would have issued it after the wall had been constructed, so de facto, he's acknowledging the extra two feet, or 16 inches or whatever it happens to be.
Well, unfortunately, we do not have the.
Verifying that the.
Sorry, have you seen the report here?
We, we, we don't have that, but Ms. Upremian is correct that normally the building department does not issue final without that. I know from experience.
Right. I recently went through construction in Pasadena, so I know that, that they, they take that.
Oh, they're crazy in Pasadena.
So they have to have that before they final.
So in a way, then, then this eight-foot structural wall has been qualified, is what you're saying?
Well, again, I think.
That's what the process is, yeah.
I, I think we really just need to focus on what are the alternatives to that, to that wall? You know, it's, they're asking for a variance for the wall. Everything in front of us is saying that the wall is approved structurally based on the building department's sign-offs and so on. Our, our question is, is should that wall remain? Or should it be abated in some way, and if so, how? In a nutshell, I think.
Right, again, you're.
And that's only one part of it.
Right.
That's, that's the side wall. We still also have a similar conversation regarding the front wall.
Right, your job is the three variance items, and you need to make a decision on those three variance items based on the findings presented to you.
Please. I thought you had a question. I'm sorry. Any other questions for the speaker? I know I have some questions that probably revolve around a little bit, I'm not sure whether it's the owner or the builder, but just a couple of quick questions on it. And I'll ask the question, then whoever can answer it. I'm just curious from these photos. We have a photo, well, first, we have a retaining wall inspection that's signed off. Then we have a photo that indicates, that looks to me like the top caps are in place on the, I call it the front yard retaining wall. And then we have a photo that's not numbered, but it shows the slope of the retaining wall and the top caps. are in place. The wall's not complete. And I'm wondering, how do we get a final sign-off with an incomplete wall? Um, I'm looking at the one that shows the white van and then below that. And when I, when I visited the site this week, I didn't get out and really pay attention to that wall and, you know, the block. Would you like to just, do you want to grab this?
The, the, the top covers are missing down there.
Yeah, the, the top, the top block is not in place. It's not fully grouted. The caps are not in place, the block. You know, how do you get a final sign-off?
Caps.
All the, yeah, and it doesn't look like it's, well, it might be nearly fully grouted.
Yeah, it's, it's-
Yeah, but how do you get a, how do you get a final sign-off from a building department when the work's not complete?
Well, probably this was prior to, on inspection, when this photo was taken.
Okay. Well, that could, and that could be already answered, that this was not a final photo. I thought this was contemporary, meaning just in the last couple of weeks.
Well, I asked the property owner to give you some copies of before conditions and during construction and after.
I'm just continuing my building department per se a little bit, I guess. All right. Um, all right. Does the commission have any questions for, or anything for the applicant slash appellate's team? Is there anything that the appellate's team wanted to add before we get closing remarks from staff?
Good evening. I'm Greg Kriaglanian. I'm the homeowner's brother, and I was, uh, the manager of the project, and I had worked with Milka, and, uh, we had made a lot of progress. One of the issues that I want to explain real quickly, I don't want to take a lot of your time, is if we take a look at the original photo of the house prior to anything being done, if, if I may just walk there for one moment?
Mm-hmm.
That wooden fence. We have different heights here. We have anything from five feet, fifteen feet, twenty-five feet.
Microphone, please.
Uh, I'm sorry, you're outside the microphone distance now.
I want to-
Why, point at it and then come back to the mic. Thank you.
So the existing, when Mr. Hagopian, uh, designed the home, and the fence started and it just went up. As you approach the driveway and you enter, you see the white fence. Now, the question is, the white fence, as you go up the driveway, the height from the street increases. So I asked Mr. Hagopian, I said, sir, you want me to put an eighteen-inch wall? I don't have a problem with that. But eighteen-inch wall, and I'm looking down at twenty-five-foot slope, I can fall over that. That doesn't make sense. How do we accommodate that? This boy has two children. One is two years old at the time it was built, and one is newborn. How do you stop from somebody falling from eighteen-inch wall where you have a twenty-five-inch straight slope down the hill? How do you do that? So he says, you're right, you do have an issue. And that was not brought up when it went to design review, or when it went to a plan check. So now, the homeowner is stuck with the situation. Mr. Hagopian is a great designer, and we work with him all the time. And I brought this issue to him while it was being built. I said, the car is going to turn back, that's one issue. How do you go from zero to twenty-five feet high from the street and still maintain eighteen-inch from the owner's side? Because that doesn't make sense. Somebody's going to flip over and, and that's it. It's over. So constructing the way it is constructed now, from the driveway side, from the homeowner's side, after the pavers, we really don't have too much height. Now, coming towards, from the street, you'll see the height gradually. So we need to find a solution in terms of, okay, here is eighteen-inch, go do it. It's not about the eighteen-inch. The reality is, it was approved wrong, and we have a situation of safety. Safety is an issue in that place, because originally you have those wooden fence. So, okay, we took the wooden fence out, what do we do now? Do we do eighteen-inch? And then the kid starts chasing the ball and then just fall over the hill?
Mm-hmm.
So that's always been the issue. And we tried to put a wall there that was not very high, not very tall. In certain areas of the wall, it is eighteen-inch above. And as we went and gradually go higher, because your height gets higher. So if you're on top of the wall, towards the inside of the house, and you look down, you have twenty-five feet straight down slope. You slip and fall, you're going to die. So-
Okay, you're starting to repeat yourself a little bit.
Okay. So my, my point is that originally, when it was designed, sir, I addressed this to Mr. Hagopian, that if I put eighteen-inch, there is going to be a problem here, because it's too steep. It starts and it goes up the hill. So that is why we constructed the way we constructed. And I told him about this, and he said he was going to bring the issue with Milka. So nothing ever got done about it, and I addressed him, and that is why it is built that way. It's not because we want it, it's just safety.
Let me, let me ask you, uh, from what design review had, and as near as we could tell from what was permitted, no light posts were ever shown. So how did you just suddenly decide to add something that wasn't shown on permitted plans?
The, the light pole, okay. We, when we decided to do the retaining wall, we had to go to the city and get another permit for it. In that process, the actual, in that process, which we do have the approved stamped plans from the city and from the engineer, in that area, it either required us to put railings, and we did tell them that we want to put a light pole. There's been some kind of a misunderstanding as to how many lights and the pilasters, if any.
Well, let me, let me ask again. The wall that was permitted, did it show light pilasters or did it not?
I don't recall, but it probably did show railings. And they, and I brought this issue to Mr. Hagopian again. I said, Mr. Hagopian, how do we-
Here's our issue. Again, things get permitted, things get approved, and suddenly there's changes. Without, you know, with, with conversations, maybe with an architect, but there's, there's nothing to document that it was ever reviewed or approved by the city. And this is, this is things that as a, as a board, or specifically as a member of this board, we get, I get very upset over people that start changing things in the field and then come back and ask for forgiveness. So what happened? Were those light posts ever shown on the plans or not?
They were supposed to be shown on the plans, because I asked Mr. Hagopian that this area is dark. How do you get to your driveway at night? It's a simple question. How do you come up to your driveway? We need lights.
I understand. So the simple question is, apparently, is you don't know that whether they were ever shown on the plans or not.
Correct.
But yet you reference approved drawings, and as the project manager, you should be pretty aware of what was approved or not. Are those approved drawings here? Did you bring a set of them by any chance?
Uh, I thought my brother had them, but I will bring them. I thought he had them with him.
Okay. All right. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of lacking an answer to that, but all right. Is there anything else you want to add? We've heard your testimony about the slope and why the, why you felt that the wall needed to be raised. We understand that.
One more quick issue is, as far as the, the retaining wall is concerned, so-called retaining wall. When Mr. Hagopian designed that driveway, if you have a car parking at this side of the parking and road, and you want to come into Joe's driveway, you couldn't have got in. The radius for the turn was impossible. You cannot get in. If there was a car parked there, you were not able to get into your driveway. And that is why-
We've heard that testimony already, sir. I, I, and if you have something to add, please do. But if we, if it's something we've already heard, I'm just going to ask you to conclude your remarks, okay?
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else? All right. All right. Okay.
Just, just for the record, when I talked to Milka and Mr. Kraus, several times, they mentioned to me that, uh, there was, that the wall, the, the big wall, was always built according to plan. And they always mentioned to me that the driveway was built wrong, but the wall was fine. And I never understood that. Now, I'm not sure why, but I never understood that. They said the wall was always built perfect, that there was a, a, a driveway issue, never a wall issue. So now, when I'm hearing like, hey, you know, wall, now you want to build the five-foot wall in front. Oh, well, why would I build the five-foot wall? You said my wall was fine this whole time. But you said I had a driveway issue. Well, okay, well, I don't have a driveway issue now. I guess it's a wall issue. But anyways, you've heard all the stories, and you, you make a decision. But that wall, uh, again, going back, I don't want to repeat myself, but there's no ulterior, uh, suggestions that I've, that, that I can really grasp onto. Thank you.
Thank you. Closing remarks from staff, please.
Chairman Kane, members of the planning commission, I guess I'll make some brief closing remarks. I mean, the staff report is pretty complete. It's a relatively straightforward case. And just like most variances, the key thing is, is what's really unique about this. Um, I still haven't heard anything, especially regarding that second finding. A lot of discussion about the history of who did what, to whom when. But as far as the, this site is concerned, it's actually larger than most in the neighborhood, which actually gives you more design options. Um, obviously, things have evolved from the original design. The paved area has gotten bigger adjacent to the garage. That's not a required paved area. There used to be a carport there. So that's the, the easiest part of the tall retaining wall to correct is in that area adjacent to the garage. The harder part is, as you get closer to the street. But, um, so lowering it to five feet is not necessarily impossible, or lowering it to maximum of eighteen inches above existing ground level in the front, fifteen feet, is not impossible. It can be up to five feet high exposed in the front setback area, too. But just, uh, on the uphill side, it can't be more than eighteen inches. So you've got three things that, from easiest to most difficult to deal with are the lights. Again, the code was, we used to have no criteria for maximum number of light standards in the street setback area. The reason that we have that standard is for projects just like this, where people built walls or fences, got caught, um, didn't want to take, usually they were, uh, combination block and wrought iron, didn't want to take anything down, really, and said, well, what, what can I do? If I take, well, can I turn these into lampposts? So we ended up having to reluctantly authorize some of these fences, the pilasters, to be turned into lampposts. So we had several silly situations. Eventually, the code was amended to avoid, um, that. So what you have here, uh, is, as Milka explained, a situation where you have many options to properly light the site. Um, in fact, the lighting is concentrated on really half of the lot, so they're not even spreading it out. So it's very easy to solve the lighting issue without the need for these pilasters. Um, Milka's already said that she's not aware of any approval of that wall, period. It could be, the front retaining wall could be as high as seven feet, since it's approximately parallel to the street, but on the uphill side, it can only be eighteen inches above existing ground level. So, um, we've suggested, well, why don't you just lower it to eighteen inches? And the issue of safety always comes up. As Milka mentioned, you could also plant a hedge or some other shrubs as a partial screen. If you look at one of the photos where the girl is standing, the exact spot where she's standing looks like it's approximately eighteen inches high. So if that part is okay at eighteen inches high, why isn't the rest okay at eighteen inches high? Plus, a barrier like that with a tight turning radius is really an opportunity to scrape your, your car against something like that. Um, if it were me, I'd probably have a six-inch-high curb and the landscaping, so that it would be less likely to damage a vehicle when you're backing out of the garage. But again, they're entitled to have something that's eighteen inches high on that driveway side, and at least for one section of that, it looks like that's what it is. So there should be no reason why they can't lower that. So the tougher part is the, um, the tall retaining wall. And again, the reason that we have retaining wall height requirements is to keep people from, um, modifying hillside land to essentially create a flat lot, and to reduce the visual impact of these walls. Um, and when you drive, drive up the street, it's quite prominent, um, when you see that wall from, coming up from the south. So, and it, and because the driveway abuts right up against it, there's no, there's no landscaping to soften it. So another retaining wall or a bermed up area would both reduce the height of the, of the wall to hopefully no more than five feet, and it would also, uh, some planting would screen the wall. Again, they, they, um, have a lot of room as you go outside the setback area to eliminate some of the paving, um, without really affecting access to the garage. That's all extra paved area. Uh, some of it used to be there with the original design, but even that area was slightly expanded. I mean, I can certainly see the need or the desire for additional, um, paved area to maneuver or to park extra vehicles. That's great. Um, but at the expense of the visual impact, well, again, uh, it's not what the code provides for. So again, I've yet to hear anything that convinces me that this is a, this property is so unique that it warrants any of those three deviations from the code. That concludes my remarks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Any questions for staff?
Just one.
Yes?
Um, Milka and Mr. Kraus, the one section of that wall that appears to be the highest is actually on the setback? No?
I don't think so. It's farther back.
Are you referring to the easterly wall, the one running parallel?
The front wall.
Oh, the front wall?
Yes. I'd have to approach the board in order to-
From, yeah.
That's tru, that's true.
Yeah, it's all in the setback area.
Well, right here, it appears. Yeah, right here. Here's the setback line, right here. So this portion here, is it, meets code?
It appears to be outside the setback effect.
Right, that's, that's what it appears.
That's correct.
So it's this portion here.
Right.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
So it looks like the portion that's outside the setback is beyond the garage. Correct?
I have a question. Um, so would you say this hill is actually an eroding hill? Is that why, and you guys also agree with that, with that, what the applicant said?
Well, all hills erode to some extent over time. It's just-
Right.
How stable are they? Obviously, there's a need for retaining wall there. Um, how high and how far fr, obviously, the farther south, southwest you push the wall, the lower the height that's necessary. So you've got, uh, more flexibility as you go easterly. Uh, the, the driveway, you'd want, it, the access essentially where it is, because it's the highest part of the street. The street's going up. So to keep the slope to a minimum, you'd want to keep the driveway apron exactly where it is. So that's where the real problem is. The rest of it's easy enough to solve. It's just a matter of designing it and the money. Um, but again, I think they can, they can, uh, again, we don't know, as Milka said, we, we're not the designers. Uh, our job isn't to redesign the project, but just by looking at it, you can clearly see, um, obvious alternatives to this design. But variances are also, even when somebody has a case, they're the minimum necessary to provide parity with generally approved, uh, permitted development in that zone or neighborhood. So again, what, what is this property owner being deprived of?
So where do we get the five-feet figure? Where, you know, that's what's approved-
The five, right.
For, you know, how do we, okay, is this what's usually approved for this type of hillside?
You've got-
Or-
Yeah, well, let me explain-
Or do other hillsides, are they permitted for eight feet? Or, you know, what, what would you-
You have several different, uh, in the R1R, which is this zone, and ROS, which is a primarily unsubdivided, but essentially the same zone, there are several different retaining wall heights depending upon the, the exact location. Assuming we're not doing a subdivision and doing major grading and putting a road in, you've got, um, a seven-foot requirement, if the wall is essentially parallel with the street. All these walls have to be decorative and blend in. The materials are, the standards are all the same. So you got a seven-foot requirement. Um, but in the setback, it can't be more than eighteen inches above existing ground level. So you can't backfill. You can cut out, but you can't backfill. You, behind the setback, you have a three-foot requirement within five feet of any of the interior property lines. Then between five feet and ten feet, you have a five-foot, uh, maximum height requirement. Um, behind the house, where it's uphill and the retaining wall is exposed, like, part of this is, if it's at least ten feet away from the property line, it could be as high as fifteen feet. Otherwise, everything else is five feet. So you've got a number of different, um, height requirements depending upon the exact location of the wall.
Mm-hmm. This is for just this area, or is that-
The whole city, in the R1R zone, yes.
Okay.
And ROS zone. Right.
Let me, let me, please, just add to that. So let's carry that thought further. If that is the standard.
That's the standard.
If I went out and had my plans done, and had the calculations done, and had them submitted, that wasn't going, first, the design engineer, the structural engineer, would not approve the plans if it was not going to work on that hillside, right? I mean, I assume that. They're going to submit you plans that are calculated.
In theory, right. That's structurally sound, right.
So at this point in time, there's no reason to believe that that standard is ineffective or inappropriate.
Those dimensions?
Yes.
Yeah, obviously, the taller the wall is, the, the, yeah, the harder it is to.
Right. But that would come out in the calculations, and that would be submitted as part of the issue.
And that would be checked by our building plan checkers.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
On the plans that are stamped, it does approve it at six feet, which is higher than five feet.
Is that a question?
That's probably for me.
It's an observation.
It's an observation. Well, Milka, I think, did already, there's a interpretation that was, my understanding is, that was going around, that said, the only, only the retaining part could be five feet, and then you had a little bit of slack for freeboard, right? Which was what we were doing. I'm hoping we're not doing that anymore, because I don't believe that's the intent.
Do you ever require, well, just out of curiosity, sections that show that it complies that?
Sure. When, the key things are in setback areas. See, otherwise, it doesn't, the 18 inches above, in the street, the street setback area, it's more critical. In the interior setback, we don't care how much it sticks above the natural ground level, because you can have a garden wall, after all. So cross-sections aren't as critical there.
So everything within the setback, the front setback, is all we're discussing? We're not discussing the walls past it?
No, we are. We are. They're too high. In fact, the highest part is beyond the setback, I think, where it's about eight feet or something.
About eight feet.
Right. And because it's one of those other situations that I described, it's more than, most of it, I think, is, correct me if I'm wrong, is more than five feet behind, or away from the interior property line, and not behind the house, and not one of those other things. So that makes it a maximum five-foot height limit. Right.
So the reason I'm asking this is, I want to ask this other question. If the soils report indicates that this is an existing house, and this is an existing situation, and there is a wall that's needed there, but the height exceeds what the code requires, is that an extenuating circumstance that substantiates a higher wall?
It's, it's, would have to be something that, if they couldn't address it in a different way, there were no other options, then they'd be here, well, or they'd be in this room, applying for a variance.
Retaining wall further away.
Right. Assuming it was, they couldn't move it further away to reduce the height.
Assumptions are calculated.
Right. Or that you couldn't build, you can build a building into it. There are ways to, there are ways to design things to not get around, but to screen or incorporate them into buildings and do other things. For example, if you made a, if you made a carport out of it, then a carport wall could be, with a flat roof, could be 12 feet high. Right? Right.
But could it be retaining?
Sure.
In addition.
Sure. But then, once you got out of the carport area, then you'd be dropping back down to five feet.
Which would look weird.
And of course, carport or garage can't be, yeah, which would look weird, but unless you just had a minimal, minimal deviation. I mean, it's kind of a trick. Nobody's generally going to do that, just to get around that. But my point is, there are usually a lot of design options. There are obviously less in a project that's already built, already graded, like this one, that has some slope problems. Again, considering where the driveway really has to be, the apron has to be, limit your options a little bit.
If the applicant had a, had a survey that was inaccurate, and when, so your building, based upon what you assume is a correct survey, this does happen a lot. And then you go out and you have to make accommodations for the inconsistencies or inaccuracies. Is that an extenuating hardship? That's not a self-imposed hardship.
It actually would be a self-imposed hardship, because the original survey would have been inaccurate. You have to make, when you're designing a project, you have to make certain allowances for site conditions, construction, materials, everything. So if you design everything so close, you better be perfect when you implement the project. So I'm not aware of any, maybe, Mr. Garcia's, I'm not aware of any case law related to inaccurate surveys resulting in a hardship condition. But even in that.
That's why I'm asking.
No, no, it's a good, it's, I've never heard anybody ask that question before. It's a good question. But then, that might, although I don't think so, take care of finding number one. Well, then, how does it take care of finding number four?
True. All four need to be made.
Right. Might work. You might really have a hardship, might be nobody's fault, but if it's not in keeping with the objectives, then doesn't solve all the problems.
Thank you for indulging.
Okay. No, that was a good question.
Other questions for staff? Okay. Seeing nothing else, I'm prepared to close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Anything else we want to redirect? Anyone? All right. We'll close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Oh, you know what? I've been requested to take a brief recess, so we're going to go into recess for just two or three minutes and pop back. Thanks for.
Thank you.
Okay. It looks like we're back in session. It's a continuation of the March 17, 2010, City of Glendale Planning Commission meeting. And we have closed the public hearing and are about to enter deliberations on PCU, I'm sorry, PVAR 2009-035 at 3165 Buckingham Road. Who'd like to go first in our conversation? Mr. Lee?
I think throughout the whole session here, you know, we heard what the variance, you know, case was, you know, supposed to be. And that is, you know, variance is considered and given when there is no option to explore, or there's a experience hardship that's imposed on the construction or on the property. As the staff indicated that, you know, with this property, I do see many options that the property owner could have gone to really meet the code. And, and also, you know, the consultant talked about going from six feet to eight feet. It's only two feet addition. But when you talk about structural retaining wall, two feet from six foot, adding to that, is 130% increase. It's a, you know, and not to have any type of drawings, even though the city inspector at the, at the end, you know, signed off on the wall. That really bothers me, that we do not have the record in the city. And the stamped drawing that reflects the final construction. And I guess that's why, you know, at the final inspection walk, that this was, you know, this was, this problem surfaced. You know, the lamp post, obviously, you know, that's no-brainers. You know, I mean, there's a, there's a code, so, you know, the owner could meet the code by reducing it. But for the variance purposes-wise, that's one of the things that's there. So obviously, if he's proposing seven, you know, I'm against that. The front wall, you know, same thing. There are some mitigation measures that you can have, you know, shrubberies and things like that. That one of the safety issues that the brother of the owner came up and talked about, could be also prevented by, you know, putting shrubs there and so on. So these are some of the mitigations that you could, I think, apply to the property to qualify the project. It's just that, you know, when this case came before us, you know, the appallant representative also, I think, you know, I think all these questions might have come up with a structural, you know, engineering part of it, because structural engineering, you know, the retaining wall and all that. You know, it would have been nice if we had something to feel, fall back on and say, you know what? Hey, they really thought this through, that tried to qualify this, qualify this wall, and went through the proper process. And, you know, then, you know, we might have something to take a look at that. But as is right now, you know, to me, it seems like it was, you know, it was well constructed, and, you know, the engineer said he will, he'll stamp his, you know, approval on the job. But that's his say. You know, we do not, we do not really have anything that's with the city that qualifies this wall right now, that of 130% increase on the structural wall. So with the strict, I guess, interpretation of what variance is supposed to be, I have a hard time approving or reversing the original finding.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Sheets.
Okay. I'll start out by saying that I understand the logic and the thinking as this project went forward. You have a lovely place, and all of this, this work that's been done looks great. But at this point in time, based on what I've seen and what I've heard, I'm not, I'm not able to reverse the finding. I will sustain the findings on this issue. And the reason, some of my thinking is, what I saw tonight in the hearing was a lot, a lot of assumptions. Based on logic, and based on what the owner thought was important, and issues around safety and so forth. But there's a way to go about that, and I think the issue here is, that was not approached The way I heard, the testimony, the wall needed to be higher, so I wanted to do that. I thought it was right. I thought it was the correct thing to do, and we did that. I talked to an engineer, and the engineer said it was appropriate. Front wall was okay. All of these items, all of these changes, all of these issues should have been discussed with planning. Should have come back to the city. Should have had plans. Should have been discussed. And they did not. I have some issues about the driveway. We talked earlier, we talked a lot about the driveway and about the wall. But at one point, it was mentioned that the wall and the excavation were done at the same time. But one of your pictures here, in fact, the same page, it shows the picture above during driveway construction and after. But what I noticed here is, the wall's done, and I noticed the driveway's not done. And then, and then we have the final, as it is now, with the excavation done. Now, I'm making assumptions, but I don't know if that wall is to, based on the grade existing, or based on the grade that it's going to be. I don't know that. So that gives me some concern, I guess is why I bring it up. The wall's too high. And my way of looking at it, the question come up with is the wall issue, a driveway issue. Right now, I think it could be either or, both. We had contractors, we had engineers, and I think all of these people together did an injustice to the owner. Because at some point in time, any engineer that made changes or suggested changes should have told you, as the owner, to come back to the city and get approval for them, and you'll need plans. If that would have been done, as we've discussed tonight, there were options. They may have been, they may have been the right options, they may not have been the right options. They may have been good, and they may have been bad. We don't know that, because those steps weren't taken. At this point in time, based on what I'm seeing, and based on the work that's done, and the additions that have been done without permit, I'm not so sure that the wall is structurally sound. I'm disappointed to hear all of these responses from the engineers that said the wall was built and designed correctly, but there are no plans, no permits. The wall was raised, do the hill sloping off, and so forth, but there are no plans, there are no calculations. Survey was not, survey wasn't accurate. All of these things are assumptions, a series of assumptions that ended up, one item by itself may not have been a game breaker, but each one stacked side by side causes concern. So that's why I'm going to sustain the previous decision from the planning hearing officer. And I'm sorry to say that, you know, you didn't come back to the city on each one of those changes, but now, whatever solution may be the right solution is going to cause you to have to come back now. So that's my way of looking at it, and that's assuming that it goes the way that I'm going, and I don't even know if that's the case. But I'm going to sustain the previous decision.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sheets. Who'd like to go next?
I'm happy to go.
All righty.
I really feel for the owner, because I truly believe that you had the very best of intentions, and you followed the direction of your hired professionals. I do think they misled you. I don't think any of it was intentional. I think sometimes expediency leads to these sorts of problems. But I could not either make all of these findings, so that makes it very hard to do anything but to support the zoning administrator's decision, which I will have to do. And I think my other colleagues said the rest. But I feel very badly that that's the situation, but I can't see where we have met all four of them, and that is the requirement.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Landrigan. Ms. Usain.
Okay. So I'll start off by saying, there were mistakes done by both sides. As we've seen, we've had the applicant who has said, you know, did some changes through the process. We had an inspector who came and said okayed on those changes, or okayed on what was finally designed. I guess the lamps weren't there, though. So I do also agree with Commissioner Landrigan that, you know, there were some stuff, you know, I do feel for the neighbors as well. I mean, for the applicant as well. With that said, I think, you know, Commissioner Sheets said that we don't know if the wall is structurally sound or not. You know, the city says that we have five feet in this area. Maybe we can make exceptions. This hill does seem a little bit steeper than other areas, especially maybe other houses, or at least, you know, the houses across the street from there, from the house. I'm not an engineer. I don't know if this is really structurally sound or not myself to make that distinction. I think it's the owner. I think it's to the owner's interest, though, that, you know, he has an engineer that, you know, he makes sure that that wall is actually structurally sound, because that's going to affect him if it's not. So, if there's any benefit of doubt, I'm going to lean on the owner, because, you know, he doesn't want to construct a wall that's going to fall apart and go on his Mr. Cross brought up the point where the wall does, is a big presence in that neighborhood. And I agree with that. There's walls in my neighborhood that are really big, and I often think of how these things got approved. So, and there are things that we can do to soften that. And I agreed with Chairman Kane and about the process in the beginning of finding these solutions, especially because, you know, the applicant feels like, you know, the inspector saw this, he said it's okay, even though he was wrong. And then Milka saw this, and Ms. Toledo saw this, and she said, you know, you actually need a variance for it. And at that point, I wish some solutions were found, so we don't come here and that money that's used for this can actually be used to fix that wall. So, one solution to actually maybe bring down or soften the image, as Mr. Cross said, is maybe to create some ivies or some, a little bit of landscaping in front of the wall. You know, if the applicant's in favor of that, then I would be in support of granting this variance. And the conditions I find, you know, this, and I might be wrong, but the conditions I see is that that wall, that hill does seem steeper than other areas where retaining walls are built. And I might be wrong, but that's the condition I see regarding that. The exceptional circumstance is that that's a longer driveway than most of the driveways in that neighborhood, and it's fronting a high hill, which is eroding maybe more than other hills. To try to change that, I think, would create some practical difficulties for the applicant and the neighbors, which we don't have one neighbor opposing this project. And as far as the lamps, you know, I could see how, you know, throughout the building process, this was not thought before, where, you know, having lamps there would be useful. And as they were building it, okay, let's put some more lamps there. I could see how, you know, they didn't think, okay, we actually need permits for that. So, I would be in support of having that at our required level at four lamps. So, with those things said, I would be in support of overturning the ruling that was done with those conditions I saw. Obviously, it looks like I'm in the minority here, but if there's any switch, I would be in support of that.
All right. Thank you. And of course, what we're doing here is deliberations. Everyone's presenting what their initial thoughts are, and, you know, our opinions change as we hear from our fellow commissioners. I just want to build on kind of what you had said in terms of the whole process. Fundamentally, property owners, even though they don't do this every day, day in and day out, between their professionals and unfortunately, just some knowledge that they have to take on in terms of responsibility, you know, the classic phrase, ignorance of the law is no excuse. So, when things happen, I guess the default for a property owner needs to be, man, I should be talking to the city about this. Now, the defense is, I fully believe you were talking to the city about it. And why the building department doesn't have a little bit of conversation with planning staff at some point and say, hey, you know, we're making a change here to a retaining wall, and have a little bit of interdepartmental communication, and maybe with the reorganization now of planning, maybe a little more of that'll happen. It's disappointing to me, regardless of the fact that fundamentally, it's an owner's responsibility. It's disappointing to me that changes were made, and that on the apparent basis that the city knew what was going on, this wall was built, this was constructed, all this was done, and you've got a naive property owner who's not doing this day in and day out. You know, maybe we could blame his engineers, who should've known better, or whatever. But regardless, the property owner is the guy that was pulling the permits, suddenly put in a position of, oh, my God, what do I do now? There's two things that could've happened here. One is an honest mistake. And I think the mistake was brought on, and I'm going to be naive enough to, I'm not, I'm sorry, not naive enough. I'm going to believe that the property owner made an honest mistake. It could be, you know, that maybe not in this case, but in another case, a property owner says, I'm going to seize as much of my property as I can. I know the grades aren't right, but I'm going to slap this wall right up against my property line, and then I'll just have to build it up and ask for forgiveness. And in a way, this could've been avoided. If you hadn't seized as much of the property as you did, you'd have less slope, you'd have a lower retaining wall. Now, it does seem to me that you kind of went along where the existing driveway was. I personally don't sense that this was a case of greed and trying to get away with something. But the fact remains, moving forward on that, the fact remains is we have a wall that doesn't meet code. That's not within the zoning variance. It meets, some of the things that have been said about, oh, you know, is it safe structurally and so on? You know, we've got a testimony from his engineer that it's okay, planning, or, you know, the building's signed off on it. We can worry about it. It's probably not in front of us. What is in front of us is, that's a big wall. The code says it shouldn't be that big a wall. Okay? Now, there's two options. One is to force that wall to move into the driveway and have to get rebuilt. You know, practically, you know, I suppose that could be demanded, but practically, I don't consider that a very good solution. To me, and something that could be done and gets away from needing the variance, is you do have enough room in there to create a planter. And whether you simply slope dirt up till you get within that six feet, you know, on an appropriate grade, or whether you build a small curb where you can raise it up and it's a little bit of a raised planter, you have enough room in there to be able to seize that, and to me, the variance disappears. And that, to me, is the solution. And why we got to this point without this being bandied about, 2020 hindsight, I'm sure staff feels bad about it. I know you feel bad about it, because your checkbook remarks on it every time you look at your balance. So, compartmentalizing that, I don't think, I think, if there was no other solution, I would actually be able to grant the variance. Because the specifics of the property are, with the steep slope and everything else, you had to retain that slope. And, okay, the wall got a little higher for whatever reason, but if there was no way to mitigate it, I'd say, let's approve the variance. But there is a mitigation, and it involves being able to do some planning and put a planter in front of that wall and basically hide the fact that the wall is as high as it is. Okay? On the front, and again, now I go back to, you know, where do these light standards even show up? And now I start going, well, now this is a little more shame on you, Mr. Property Owner, for adding a bunch of stuff and not really carrying it through. But fundamentally, given the neighborhood, given the specifics, you know, I personally don't care if it was five, six, four, five, six, seven lights. That doesn't bother me. But again, I think there's a way to mitigate the wall, but I don't think you can actually bring it into conformance within mitigation. In other words, I could see where on your driveway side, you're a couple courses higher than you need to be, which would reduce a couple of courses on the other side. For example, the raised, the raised light standards could be flush with the wall, and there's several other courses of block that could be brought down. So, I could find a way to approve a variance for that wall with conditions involving removing some of the courses. It'd be a little hard to lay it out, but in terms of a verbal motion. But I frankly could find a path to dealing with that front retaining wall, you know, short of moving the whole wall. The way this process should've worked is, when you were first digging and everybody's looking at the slope, between your engineer and your builder and yourself and the city, people should be saying, dude, you're not going to be able to survive at six. At that point, you move your wall, you know, I guess it would be northward in the property? I'm not sure, west? I don't know. More west than anything. And the driveway right now that has the low retaining wall, that moves over. You know, that's the way it should've been, but, you know, that was, you know, several hundred yards of concrete and several tons of block and several months ago. So, long and rambling in terms of what I'm sharing, but I guess what I'm saying is, I'm siding with every, my fellow commissioners about the big wall in general, because there is a way to mitigate that. So, I don't think we have to do a variance. You just have to solve it with, that's one of the suggestions. On the front, I'm willing to work through, if we can get three votes, I'm willing to work through some sort of granting of the variance for that. If we can't get to three, I understand it, but those are just my thoughts on it.
Chairman Kane. I would support your thought if these things happen. That is that, yes, I think your suggestion of having a planter there and actually, you know, bringing the retaining wall, you know, to the height requirement. But I do still want to see as-built drawings that needs to be approved by the city and the calculations submitted to qualify the wall. Because, I mean, the engineer was willing to do that. So, with those conditions and with your idea of a planter in the front, I have no problems with that.
Let me, just one moment.
I just want to clarify, yeah.
I want to just double-check in terms of process. We can certainly put in a condition that the engineer of record makes a far more affirmative statement with sketch and so on, showing the, in situ, the actual condition.
And as-built drawing being qualified, you know, actually.
And as-built, exactly. Signed and stamped.
Right.
I'm not sure, since the city's already signed off it from the building department, I'm not sure how we would condition that as far as a city approval. Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Chair, your question, whether we can require Building Department to sign off on?
Well, just if we, the thought was, let's get something from the engineer and that the city approves. And I guess my thought on that would be, I suppose, planning staff could approve based on the assurances of the structural engineer. Where in other words, I'm just trying to figure out who in the city could approve such a.
I think it would be both. I mean, planning to determine whether it's consistent with all the conditions that the commission has put on, and then building for a compliance with the building code and for health and safety.
But the building department's already signed off. There is no permit. There's nothing for them to act against.
But to the extent that the permit approved this wall, then it was issued in error. So, really, they need to, they need to reapprove it after the approval of the variance.
Us, okay. Us, okay. That makes sense, because we've heard testimony that, oh, yeah, the building department saw it and it's all approved, but we haven't seen the paperwork. So, I think that does make sense. I agree with what Mr. Lee was saying. Mr. Sheets, you had some thoughts on one of those last?
I just, I just wanted to process what going on. I mean, I heard what you said, Mr. Kane, about the main wall, the large wall, the retaining wall, and then your option or condition relative to the front wall. And then, Mr. Lee's input was, it sounded to me like he was saying that he was agreeing with your option that you offered about the retaining wall, and I didn't read it as such. I read the fact that the retaining wall, these are my words, you were thinking of sustaining the denial, because there were options on the retaining wall. And then you were offering an option on the other component, the wall that has, the front wall that has the pilasters. So, I just wanted to clear that up as to where we were going, to make sure Mr. Lee's comments were on track, or if we were going another direction.
That actually raises it, because what we're saying is, we're not granting a variance on the retaining wall. He can deal with it with a planter. And if we're not granting the variance, then there's nothing for the city to approve. If we do grant a variance on the retaining wall, then there's something for the city to approve.
So, if I'll clarify, you, what you, I think you interpreted his thought as to what an option was as being a condition. And I don't think that was it, what he was saying. That was an option. So, for that reason, I'm going to sustain it. That's what I thought happened there. Is that what you?
Let me clarify my position again. You know, as I said in the beginning, you know, overall project, you know, I was not, you know, fond of going through with it. Now, as far as, you know, as far as, you know, if there are some qualifications of that wall, and his suggestion of, you know, putting a planter, let's say, comes out two feet and goes up two feet, one-to-one slope, that reduces, you know, now, I'm interpreting that correctly, is it down to six foot? Is that what you're?
If they, if they put in some sort of planter in front of the wall to create it only being six feet, it disappears from a variance, I believe. Right?
Is that okay?
I might clarify that, but, Mr. Chairman Kane, your proposal for the front wall, cutting the pilasters down.
Let's just focus on the sidewalk first.
On the sidewalk. But it may change your whole thinking, because that would meet code then. Your option sounded like it would, two, couple of, removing a couple of courses from the front wall and the lamp standards would meet the code. So, you wouldn't need a variance.
And that's, exactly. Well, except for the lampposts. I was saying, I didn't care.
Oh, if you wanted to actually approve the lamp, okay. Okay, that condition.
That was the part, right. And see, this is the frustrating thing for those of us that just have sat here for several, for a couple hours, as well as I'm sure for city staff, and definitely for the applicant, is the kind of things we're talking about here could've been handled well before the variance.
Well, as Milka said, we did meet, and we suggested some of these things after the original decision, and there was no interest on the part of the property owner to explore these.
Well, let's just say that whether that's true or not, I'm sure there's a communication gap between what they were hearing and perhaps what the city was hearing. Fair enough. We are where we are today. So, now, we're moving forward from where we are today. So, here, here's what I'm hearing. The applicant said he's willing to go with less lights, for that matter. But I personally don't care. We don't have to grant a variance on the big wall, as long as he puts in a planter. It just disappears. And unfortunately, though, I still think he needs a variance on the front wall, because even if he removes some courses, he's still going to be over 18 inches.
He can't be over 18, to clarify, can't be over 18 inches on the high side. You can be as high as seven feet on the exposed side, because the wall is substantially parallel to the street.
There will be places he'll be over 18 inches.
On the high side?
In my view, in my view of taking off the block, there's still, in some areas, about three courses of block. Not for all of it, but in some areas, that's 24 inches. So, in theory, he would still need, you know, a variance for a modest amount of block. In other words, if you look at the wall, it's hard to describe a picture, but one of the walls from the inside, you'll see in some cases, it's three, four, five block high. And I'm suggesting, for example, on the one, the picture I'm looking at, it's hard to describe, because they're not numbered. This one?
This one on the bottom.
The bottom. That first one, where you have the light pillar and it appears to be five courses high, I would suggest that where it's five courses high, it could be made three courses high and carry it across at the start. Okay? And basically, kind of continuing that theme down. So, with three courses, he's 24 inches. He's still above code, but it's a very reasonable and rational reason for doing that. So, I could grant a variance if the front wall was, let's say, three courses or less.
Plus cap?
Plus cap, sure. Yeah, we'll give him another two inches. Three courses plus cap, yes. Well, and then it depends. And none of these foreign grout joints. So, you know, that's where I'm going.
The chairman, so if I hear you correctly, by having the planter actually exclude this retaining wall from the variance.
It doesn't require a variance.
It doesn't require a variance, okay. But, you know, I'm still bothered by the fact that we do not have the record, we do not have the, you know... not have the, you know, the proper drawing, you know, on the project and the calculation. So, how can we make that part of this process where they submit that, you know, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that maybe you will voluntarily do that, but.
Mr. Shu, you were about to say something?
I don't feel comfortable with this.
At the risk of making this even more confusing, it would seem to me that, and, and, you know, based on my statement, that it seemed, I was thinking that now you will have to come back to the city. So, to make this a lot simpler for my feeble mind, that's going to occur no matter what we do, and I, and I don't feel comfortable sitting here and doing the design work, although we're doing, trying to do the right thing. I think the city's more qualified to do that and the engineers within the city. So, it would be my suggestion that we sustain the previous judgment, knowing that, and suggesting that the appellant now come back to the city and, and say, what are these options? What can we do? How many options do I have? And then they make the decision that, okay, I need to get an engineer to design this flower bed. I mean, I think they're great options, but I don't need, we think we need to decide here. I think they need to go forward and do the thinking, do the planning, and do the designing the right way. That's what I was.
Let's continue to compartmentalize them. Let's just talk about the large retaining wall first, in terms of that. I, I understand, and I have some concerns about the structural integrity of that wall. I don't like the whole way the building department and the engineer and everybody signed off, but I don't think we can act, I don't think that's in front of us. Mr. Garcia?
Well, the issue, in terms of reviewing it, that'd be correct, but again, I, I don't see a problem with requiring that, if, if you're going to improve one aspect of that wall to remain, requiring that an as-built plan be prepared, if it's already been prepared, then it be submitted to the building official.
Are you saying we can make that a condition of the variance that we're granting for the lower wall? Because we're, you know.
I see what you're saying.
One path is the, the large retaining wall disappears as a variance item if they put a planter or a small wall in front of it.
But, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What we have is that, you know, we do not have the proposal with, you know, before us, with the planter. What we have.
Oh, no, we're just going to deny the variance.
Right, exactly. So, that's what.
When we deny the variance, there's nothing to condition as far as structural review and so on. So, so, but what'll happen then is, he will have to have a discussion with staff, you know, he's going to prepare planters or, or another low wall or whatever he wants to do to eliminate anything that's higher than six inches. Okay? Now, so, so to me, please jump in, anyone, to me, we sustain the denial of the variance for the large retaining wall, because he has solutions. Okay? So, now, we're okay. So, now, we're talking about the front retaining wall, and I think it can be mitigated. I, I would, I could not approve it the way it is, but I think it can be conditioned, mitigated if you will. It'll still require a variance, but it'll be plus or minus 26 inches, including cap, as opposed to the, the staggered battlements, that approach, kind of a castle, if you will, in some way.
So, you are setting the maximum height limit as 26 inches?
Yes. And, you know, as the driveway slopes, you know, maybe, okay, if it gets an inch.
So, is there going to be some changes based on 26?
Changes.
To the wall?
Yes.
Yes.
You have to take the.
I kind of sketched from the downhill side, because, because frankly, nobody cares what the uphill side looks like. It's your property, you're staring at that wall. But from the downhill side.
Actually, that's the part they care about.
Well.
Well, I think.
I'm afraid.
They care about a relative.
From the sidewalk, from the driveway, that's where the 18 inches is.
No, it's from.
Yes, it is.
Is it, is it from the street side?
No, from the driveway.
Oh.
That's why, that's what I was, the point I was trying to make, they could have as high as seven feet exposed on the street side.
So, somebody from the street could be looking in the front driveway at a seven-foot-high wall?
Yes.
Exactly. I always thought it was 18 inches.
No, it's on, it's a.
No, that's the.
If you cut in, it's 18 inches above existing ground level, so that, that driveway area was already there. So, essentially, you're talking about, that's why, the point I was trying to make, if you make them lower it, they're going to meet code.
They're not, you're going to run.
They still won't meet code.
Well, well, if.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if they have three courses plus cap, they won't meet.
It'll, it'll reduce the impact from the drive, from the street side anyway.
Right.
And it'll reduce the overall height on the interior, so that you're getting.
If they take out the top?
The top couple of courses, and just make it a lower. So, they still have to do some changes up.
But, I mean, isn't that, if they reduce that, then that's causing, I mean, that area just becomes so open, if they don't have that fence blocking, I mean, if their child goes out. It just creates a safety.
But, but that's the condition here and here, and here.
All righty.
So, you're saying this is, this is a problem, right? This is a problem?
Yeah, I'm not saying there's really anything wrong with those guys, it's just when it got a little more massive than here.
So, that's it?
And, and these, and the light pillars.
Okay. So, we're, all we're saying is to just reduce these two.
Matching 26 inches.
Uh, probably.
Pretty blocks.
The, the only place I was thinking about for a second and hesitating was just at the mouth of the drive. No, that's fine.
It's the top, top of the driveway.
Yeah, just right up to the top.
Let me ask a question.
Go ahead.
So, with your suggestion, a variance would still be required?
Yeah, because it's over 18.
So, is, is it appropriate for us to make a condition on this that needs to be kind of measured out and designed, and attached to that a condition that another variance is required, and we just give the variance?
No, no, what you're suggesting is that of these variances, there are three parts. We, we approve, let's say, two parts of that and deny one part. I think that's what you're trying to say.
But what are we, what are we approving? We're approving that it's done with, still requiring a variance, so we're.
We're sustaining the, we're sustaining the zoning administrator on the large retaining wall, and we're overruling them on the front wall and approving it with the conditions that it not exceed 26 inches.
Okay.
Please, Ms. Underwood.
I think this is truly honorable, what we're trying to do here, but how will we make the fourth finding of a hardship? It has to have four findings for a variance.
Fourth finding is related to the ordinance, isn't it?
How it's in keeping with the objectives of the ordinance?
Yeah, the objections of the ordinance.
Or the general plan.
Well, how did, how did the appellant's representative, Ms. Upremian, suggest it? Let's see. Can I find that in her?
Yes, she has four, it's on, it's about four pages in, five pages. Oh. Thank you. It's on her, it's in show higs right here, this one. This is the, no.
That's the actual one.
Oh, yeah, but the other one is, well, it doesn't speak to it.
No, it doesn't speak. See, it doesn't speak to it on that very last paragraph, the top of the retaining wall.
Speaking to the large wall.
There was no substantiation of it being a hardship in.
But I, well, you keep saying hardship, it's intent of the ordinance. The fourth finding would be the intent of the ordinance.
I'm talking about number A.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, at one point, you said fourth. I misunderstood.
I meant, well, I meant that there are four findings. There is a finding, I'm sorry, I'm misled you. Misled you, I'm so sorry. A is, is the finding that I would have a hard time seeing being made.
Okay, the practical, that we can probably find. The practical difficulty, hmm, let's see.
That, that's the one I.
No, no, you're right, you're right.
Well, the, the lamp, if we bring it down to four lamps, that's meeting the ordinance, right? That part.
Well, no matter what we do.
Is it, is it the same thing, you know, if we, there was a fence before that, right? And that was okay?
The practical application cannot be a safety issue, because that's brought up all the time. So, it's not a unique situation, there are lots of su, I, I have a hillside retaining wall, and I have a similar situation, so I totally sympathize with the situation, believe me. So, one of the things though is, safety is not an issue that is, that constitutes a hardship, and those are, the issue here is, there is nothing here that the practical application of it doesn't, would not address. So, that's, that is, I would not be, I mean, I, I think it's great that we're trying to work with them.
You can't find it.
I can't make that find it.
I'm in agreement.
I'm sorry?
I'm in agreement with her.
If you can convince.
Well, isn't there, I mean, in the staff report, it said, in the staff report, it said that we can't find it because it couldn't blend, you know, it wouldn't be, it would be against the objective of the ordinance, because it wouldn't blend with the landscaping, right? So, if we can find a way to make this blend with the landscaping, would you be in favor of that? I mean, that's the condition that I see. Either maybe put a planter or something that covers up the wall a little bit.
There is an option.
I, I would be more inclined if Ms. Upremian had something to add to the, to the conversation, because the struggle here is, is working through a finding, and, and if you could share it with her and she agrees, I'd, I'd be happy to reopen public hearing, which I haven't, by the way, we're just, you just happen to overhear our deliberations. So, if there's something, chat first.
The fact is, is that on the, on, from the house, when you look at that cone requires that it be 18 inches from the driveway, you can put plants there. You can meet the intent of the code fairly affordably. So, I would think that even though, and, and actually, if the lights all are inward and they are on the inside and they shine on the sidewalk, I don't care how many they have, I think it's when they're up and they're showing the whole way, that's the concern. I, I think there are ways that it can be done that meet the intent of the code, so I don't see a hardship by applying the code. That's really what I'm having a hard time.
So, can we do it with conditions of doing the planters, or?
Well, but they can do it themselves.
And they don't have to have a.
And we don't have to do anything.
Exactly.
So, they could have done.
Right.
Yeah, with a little discussion with the, the option.
And there are sufficient plants that you plant on center that would.
So, is that really, I mean, is that really, if they put a planter in front of the retaining wall, and then if they add some plants in front of this wall, would that be okay? It's going to be, it's going to be fine, or is that going to be something like, they're going to have to come back to another?
No, if they low, if they lower the front wall to 18 inches max above the driveway level.
And then put a planter.
They don't need to put the planter in, that would be for their own desire for.
Safety.
Safety, plus they have to plant something there just to get through the design review landscaping.
Wait, you're talking about the front?
Front, right, 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 front.
But, I'm, if the, if there's a planter in front of the retaining wall.
A big one?
That, that's.
Right, if they can cut the height, the height down by burm-ing up the landscaping, I mean, they, they can't just plant in front, they have to actually build the dirt up a little bit. Well, they could put and plant a curb that would raise it. Yeah, right, up to another five-foot-high, well, you're not going to have a five to get to five, but you could have a two, you know, maybe a two-foot-high. By the way, I've reopened public. Thank you. And then you berm it up at two to one and you stick some plants in there. It's done all the time.
Wait, so the planter is in front of the wall?
Well, we're talking about.
And it goes up to.
A planter in front of the retaining wall.
Right. They don't have to take off anything from the top.
And then we're talking about planting tall shrubs.
Right.
In front of the other one to provide the safety issue that they want to address with this wall that is in non-conformity. So, see, to me, if you apply the code the way it is intended, you don't have a hardship.
You just have some minor things you can do to.
Let's, let's, I hear what they're going to say, and as long as the public hearing was reopened, let's have Ms. Upremian take one shot at creating that, that finding for the front planter wall. Somebody, somebody gets one shot at, go ahead.
Since we're all talking about having one-to-one kind of a berm or a planter in front of the large wall, so that means that eliminates the need for a variance.
That's correct.
How about if we do the same thing for the lower wall?
You could, that's where the.
That's right, that's what we're talking.
That's where we.
But you'd still have to cut that lower wall down.
No, no, instead of cutting the wall down, we'll raise the dirt up to it from the street level.
You're thinking of it from the wrong direction.
We're going from the backside of the driveway.
18 inches is from the driveway to the top of the wall, from the inside, not the outside. The outside, they don't care how tall that wall is.
How about if we add dirt in the front, in the, from the driveway?
Yes.
You could put a planter there, yes, you could. Take out the pavers and put a planter there.
But the light issues.
They're not going to serve the driveway if you put plants in front of them.
It will not be, as we're doing in, on the driveway, we're burying some pavers and putting the dirt back to it.
You'd have to limit yourself to four lamps. Right, Mr. Kraus?
Right, in the setback area. I mean, I mean, they could pile dirt up as long as it wasn't, it was, beyond the.
Wait, I'm sorry, what's the setback in this zone?
15 feet. They got a lot of pavement beyond the garage. I mean, you're, you're not going to pile dirt up and affect your, your turning radius to the garage, but beyond that, if they want to do that, but why, why would you do that and not just lower the, lower the courses that are already there? Sure.
They have an option at that point.
So, are you in favor of, you know, putting the planter in front of the retaining wall? Lowering that a little bit?
All right, so, so you're saying, your solution is kind of what we're saying. The, the only other option is, is, is that Ms. Upremian can suggest a, a lucid argument that would allow us to make that finding that is lacking. You know, then, then you get your variance. Otherwise, you'll have to do something along the lines that you just suggested, sir.
Hello, good evening now. Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, I believe you're, you're addressing about the front wall and the finding number four, correct?
No, 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 no.
Hey, finding.
It was of the four findings, the one we're having difficulty with is the practical difficulties unnecessary hardship.
Which is number one?
Yes.
Correct.
It's one of the four findings.
Well, in that finding, I, I believe I included in your packet exhibit number one, which talked about a typical hillside property with upslope retaining walls and the code requirements, and I argued that not all hillside block sizes and shapes are what is shown in exhibit one in the code. And I talked about that the curved upslope driveway in a house that sits approximately 15, 20 feet above the street level, so the distance in height from the street level to the house or the driveway, that's being one issue. And then I believe I also talked about to move the retaining wall away from the interior setback area or to lower it any further will impose dangerous conditions. Please keep in mind, the reason the code requires or allows retaining wall is for safety reasons. Otherwise, you know, on flat properties, you don't require or allow retaining walls. It's strictly for hillside properties and for safety reasons, nothing else. Otherwise, no retaining walls will be built. Again, I talked about to move the retaining wall away from the interior setback or to lower it will impose dangerous conditions and therefore unnecessary hardship for the resident. Also, by moving the front wall away from the setback area, that means if, assuming to meet code, the wall is moved away from that 15-foot setback area, then there is a problem with 25-foot turning radius instance, because most of that front foot setback a problem with 25-foot turning radius instance because most of that 20-foot setback area is within that 25-foot turning radius. As you get out of the garage area, portion of that driveway leading to the garage is within the 15-foot setback area. So it's impossible to locate the walls or any structures above that point.
We're not proposing moving it. We're proposing cutting it down to the code required height.
Right.
So all of the elements you have talked about, we're not proposing.
Right, but in terms of meeting the street.
What is the problem with cutting it to 18 inches? That's, that's.
Right.
You need to convince us.
I don't think you can sell it.
And I don't think you can. But it was a good try.
Well, again, with the topography and the distances, if the house was sitting further in and you had that space between the garage and the driveway and the wall, then that would have not been a problem. Because then you had sufficient backup distance. I think the safety issue is, as you drive out of the driveway backing up, that distance, portion of that distance, that distance in that map that's shown, it's within the 15-foot setback area. That was one argument that I made. That it's difficult to meet code if you move it further away.
Okay, we understand that.
Or to lower it, then it presents a dangerous.
We understand that, I think, I think it's time to reclose.
I tried.
That's right, you took a run at it. We gave you one more shot, and, and I'm sorry, we're gonna close the public hearing. I'm, right. Back to where we were, you know, after three and a half hours, I, I think we're dangerously close to sustaining the zoning administrator, aren't we? Although we have uncovered a number of solutions that the, that the applicant can undertake. Is that safe to say, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
I think so.
Further comments? Please, Mr. Sheets.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Anything from anyone else?
But again, I'm coming back that as part of this thing, decision, that are we, as we're denying this, you know, asking them to come back?
You can't condition a denial.
I'll point out that, to the extent that even if there was a, a final issue and if it was an error, you're sustaining the decision, so it really would have to come down unless it's appealed to the council. But in any event, the, the building official will always have authority to ask for as-built plans if this was gonna go forward as, as an approval at some point, so.
All right, since they're denying.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Sheets, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, and I'll, I'll lead into that with the point that I, I think, the way I'm understanding all this deliberation is there are options, there are solutions, and that would be the path forward. Based on that, I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of the current record relative to variance case number PVAR 2009-035 located at 3165 Buckingham Road, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the commission hereby sustains the planning hearing officer's decision and denies the variance case number PVAR 2009-035 based on the following findings pursuant to Title 30, Chapter 30 dash dot 43 dot 030 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the findings are, as the findings as stated in the motion.
Second.
Will we motion support? Would you please call roll?
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Landrigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Commissioner Yacine?
Aye.
Chairperson Kay?
Aye, and a vote of four, five to zero, the Planning Commission has sustained the zoning administrator's denial of variance case PVAR 2009-035. There's usually a prepared statement that I don't have with me, but it allows you time for further repeal and you have to do it within 10 days. 15 days. All right. I've just turned the page and with profound disappointment, we have another agenda item.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Hamilton, you have sat here with great patience for three hours and 20 minutes. How much time do you need for this?
How much time would you like me to take?
30 seconds to two minutes?
30 seconds. I'll be happy to do it very quickly. I'll be happy to do it very quickly.
Let's do it very quickly, I'll, at that point, I'll survey the individual members. We have no speaker cards on it, see if anybody has anything to add, and then we'll do a very quick recommendation depending on what our remarks are, okay? Please.
We're proposing, bringing forward to you a reasonable accommodation ordinance that was recommended that be adopted by the State Attorney General's Office back in 2001.
Thank you very much.
We've modeled it after a model, after a model ordinance proposed by some outside parties to a large extent. We brought it forward to you last November, at that time, you suggested we add some guidelines that would assist staff, assist applicants, and assist the decision maker as to when these might be issued or, or approved. And we've, I've added a section in the staff report that describes the guidelines. I will, I will very briefly describe the two guidelines that we've, that we've, the language that we've come up with. Proposals that result in the elimination or reduction of code-required off-street parking spaces should be avoided in areas subject to on-street parking permits. The intent is, areas that are heavily impacted with on-street parking, where, where the neighborhood has adopted on-street parking permits as a way to regulate on-street parking, especially in those areas, elimination of off-street parking should be avoided by these proposals. That's guidance one. Guidance two is proposals to modify structures, especially single-family homes, should respect existing development patterns if possible. For example, if there's a consistent front setback on the homes, proposed additions should be designed to adhere to the existing setback. If there's an existing similar height above ground, proposed additions should respect the existing heights. Those guidelines are not in the ordinance, they are in the, the application, the proposed application, and in the handout that would advertise this process. That's our, the ordinance has not changed from before, and that's our proposed response to your recommendations from November. Do you have any questions?
Questions, please.
You know, on the examples you, you know, how you develop this language here, for the garage and so on. One, I guess, example that, that comes to my mind is that, you know, allowing this type of a application, reviewing this application. Let's say, you know, you're trying to stay within the setback and then, you know, in line with the, all the other properties, and this person, you know, in a wheelchair needs to build up a ramp in the front of the house, or in the kitchen area or something that happens, happens to face the street.
Yes.
That needs to come out to have a turning radius.
Yes.
You know, how is that addressed in here to allow something like that?
I believe we've got that under our discussion section of the staff report, under, where is it? Oh, yeah, the city has an exception to setback requirements for, quote, "uncovered steps, ramps, or landings not over four feet high as measured parallel to the natural or finished ground level at the location of construction, may project into required setback for a length of 14 feet measured parallel to the building." That's already in our code.
Okay.
So a ramp, like you're describing, already anticipated, already managed by our code.
And what about, let's say, if there's a kitchen and then, you know, you have to kind of like build, nuke area that, that portion of the house comes out?
Well, again, it's, these are guidelines, these are suggestions that applicants are recommended to follow to, and the way I would anticipate something like that working is if there was something fairly consistent in the neighborhood, then the zoning administrator and/or staff might work with the applicant to see, are there other feasible locations for the ramp or for the addition that could achieve the same thing that the applicant's trying to achieve, but then would be more respectful of the setback? If that's not possible, then we might still approve this. But if there is a feasible alternative, we might recommend that or condition the project with that as a way to incorporate or, or implement the guideline.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton, I have two questions. One, one is actually correction of a typo on page two of the ordinance.
Okay.
Number, of the findings, number E.
Yes.
If the zoning hearing officer grants or grants with modifications to a request, the request shall be granted to an individual?
Yes.
So that is correct?
Yes.
And shall not run with the land, so it's not really a topo, typo. What I'm curious about is, so that if you make changes to all of the electrical outlets because you're in a wheelchair, would you be required to?
Rip them out?
Yes.
No, because the zoning administrator can find that the modifications, if he, if it goes on to say, that the modifications are physically integrated into the structure and cannot be easily removed or altered to comply with the city's zoning, then.
But I just wanted to make sure that.
That's, that's absolutely the intent, that if it's.
Okay, so the intent is that anything that is built in does not have to be torn out.
And the flip side is, anything that can be easily removed should be.
Okay. All right, the second question I have is on page one, under 30.52.040, section four, procedures.
Yes.
Request for reasonable accommodation shall be in writing on a form provided by the community planning department.
Yes.
By any individual with a disability, unless you're blind, his or her representative or a developer. But what it is, the reason I'm asking that, and I'm, I'm not being flippant, but I am bringing it up, is that if you have a hand disability, putting it in writing, what is the intent here? And it seems to me that you're forced to have somebody else do it for you then. Why is that requirement in?
I believe in, it's not in the application form itself, but I believe it's in our, if it's not in our handout, it should be, we will provide assistance to anybody with a disability that needs help in actually filling out the form. That's, that's, that's an accommodation of itself. So we will assist them in, in, in actually filling out the form.
Having a mother who was disabled.
Yes.
Sometimes that's not an enabling experience.
Not an enabling experience.
Meaning that if you want to be self-sufficient.
Yes.
It's very hard to ask people to help you, and it's also sometimes a bit demeaning.
So. Okay.
Even though that is the case, is, if somebody chose to do it another way that they felt comfortable with, why would we deny them that option?
I don't, I don't think that we would, and I think probably Mr. Garcia, the city attorney, would agree. Any, I think any reasonable form in which the application is made would unlikely be accepted by the city.
Members of the commission, even, the city also has all certain ADA policies with respect to gaining information or giving information to members of the public who may have disabilities. But I think what Ms. Hamilton is referring to is if, for example, someone can't actually complete the application, the planning department staff member would, would actually do it just by, based on a conversation. It would just, that accommodation would be provided and wouldn't necessarily have to be assistance to a particular applicant, it would just be, this is the accommodation I need, I can't fill out the application because of this, and then the staff member would just either fill out an application or just make a, a report for the file. So it's noted what the particular applicant needs to, is requesting.
At the top of page two of the, of exhibit five, the explanation of the process is our statement that if you need help in answering the questions on the application, you may ask for assistance from the community planning department. We, we didn't really detail that out, but the, the intent is absolutely what you're getting at.
So, no, I just, I, I see it maybe in, just the way it's so stringently stated seems to be almost a detriment to individuals with certain disabilities.
I'm, I'm, we're willing to entertain some alternative submittal.
I don't know, I guess we require that all the time.
If you add language to the extent feasible.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Or some other form acceptable to the director of.
Yeah, something like that, that would allow an individual with a certain disability to do something that they would feel more comfortable presenting as opposed to asking for help.
So maybe in, in the procedure section, 3052040 of the ordinance, the first sentence could read possibly, after the, after community planning department, "Request for reasonable accommodation shall be in writing on a form provided by the community planning department or in other form deemed acceptable to the planning, to the director of community planning," comma.
Yeah, I think that, I think that opens it up to other application processes that a person can do to maintain their dignity.
That sounds fine.
Thank you. Nope, that's it, thank you.
Just one quick question, I noticed the, the point that there will be no, when the application is submitted, that there will be a written response, and then beyond that, there will be no hearing?
Yes.
Beyond that, it would go, come right to the commission if there's an appeal. Is there, what's your thinking in not having a hearing when they submit?
The intent of the guidance from this, the attorney's general's office essentially is to make the process as easy as possible to, to an applicant, and to make it sort of as private as possible so they are not subjected to a hearing process where emotions about their disability could affect the decision-making process. So we felt that, some jurisdiction actually handled this as an over-the-counter, and we felt that might be a little too quick, and there should be a little more deliberation. So we established it through the, the hearing officer, but without a hearing, so that there is some amount of city deliberation, some amount of city evaluation, in case, on the rare occasion, a request comes in that maybe actually is found to be unreasonable, but also protects the rights of applicants to be shielded as the, which seems to be the intent of the state and federal laws.
I understand, so what, what if something's not clear on the, on the application, would you?
I believe it says either on the application or in the ordinance that the zoning, the zoning hearing officer can ask for clarification.
That's my point, that's good, I can catch. Yeah. That's all I have.
Any other questions for staff, comments? Absent that, do we have a recommendation or a motion to, for the recommendation? There is a form, I believe, they've.
I think there is.
Yes, there is.
I move that upon consideration of proposed ordinance relating to a reasonable accommodation procedure, the planning department hereby recommends that the city council adopt the proposal amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995.
With the comments of Commissioner.
With the amendments of the commissioner?
With the amendments of the commissioner.
Seeking support?
Second.
Motion, spark, call roll, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Landrigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Commissioner Yacine?
Aye.
Chairperson Kay?
Aye, on a vote of five to zero, the Planning Commission has recommended zoning code amendment case PZON 2009-004 be adopted by the city council. All right, planning department updates, I see none. Comments from commissioners? I hear none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.